Good evening. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and bring to order the July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. I get a roll call of members, please.
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Jeff Musaw.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Linda Newton-Curtis.
Yeah.
Mike Griffiths.
Here.
And Jason Gill, Laney Quinn, and Avery Hansen are absent.
Thank you. So the first order of business, I'll ask for any public comments that are not on tonight's agenda. If there are any, you'll have five minutes to speak. Um, I don't believe we have any written. Is there anyone in the audience that like to bring something up that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing nothing, uh, we'll move on to the consent calendar, entertainer motion regarding last month's minutes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we do not have minutes prepared yet for the, so that will come to you in August.
Thank you. We'll take care of that in August. All right, then we'll move along. And our first item up is a quasi judicial public hearing. And I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And it's with regard for V A R two, three dash zero, 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 one. It's a request for a variance to reduce the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces. And I'd like to go ahead and call for abstentions by a sex parte contact or objections to jurisdiction from anyone.
Commissioner Griffiths, I'm a member of the Newburgh Downtown Coalition, but I did not participate in any discussion regarding their letter of support.
Thank you. That should be no problem. And we'll go ahead and I guess with Avery, Doug, are you going to read the legal?
Unfortunately, you get to listen to my voice five times tonight. Um, O R S one ninety-seven, seven ninety-seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must devise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the land use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at Luba. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, sir. And um, now we'll go to staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Clay Downing, Planning Manager and the Case Planner for this item. Let's see here. All right. So we've got everything working. So this is file number V A R two, three dash zero, 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 one. And this is a continued item from our June Planning Commission hearing. What we have here are some of the basic information associated with the project, including the oh, and just, just to be clear, I'm going to be reading, basically reading in the staff report so that everyone has the same understanding. The applicant for today is Debbie Cleek with the Booking Group. The owner of the property is the Chahalem Parks and Recreation District. The request is for a variance to reduce the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces associated with the ongoing activity in preparation for other activities that are considered, and that'll be talked about more in future slides. Location is four, one, five East Sheridan Street, also called the Chahalem Cultural Center. Tax lot R three, two, one, eight, D, D, one, five, seven, zero, zero. It's located in the Institutional Zoning District. It's uh, in the public quasi-public port, uh, land use designation of the Comprehensive Plan, and it's in the overlays that are listed at the bottom of the slide, including the civic corridor, airport, conical surface, marijuana exclusion, and urban renewal district overlays. On the next slide, we have a couple of the recent activities, and in part, I wanted to add this slide in to just clarify some of the things that happened leading up to the June eighth Planning Commission hearing and those that have happened since then. So on June eighth, your commission held a, held a public hearing and was, and then this item was continued to this date. On June fifth or July fifth, staff published an updated staff report that included additional attachments that were not present on the June eighth, included uh, public comment forms that were received during the Planning Commission hearing on June eighth, attachment six, and public comments that were received following June eighth Planning Commission hearing and prior to the publication of the staff report. That's attachment seven. After July fifth, which was uh, on July, after July fifth, Stafford distributed supplemental packets containing additional public comments which were received after publication of the staff report for tonight's hearing. And I wanted to also highlight a few of the supplemental materials that were received both before and after that last hearing. So an updated traffic impact analysis was, was received from the applicant team in April of two thousand and twenty-three. And that's attachment, in attachment one is a supplemental material to the initial application materials. Attachment one also includes a memorandum, uh, a memo that was received from the Executive Director of the Chahalem Cultural Center. On July second, a supplemental packet was containing course, additional correspondence from the Executive Director of the Cultural Center, which is included in attachment four, uh, was provided to the Planning Commission. And then on June fifth, another supplemental packet was given to the Planning Commission, which is now included as attachment five. After the June eighth hearings, um, addition, eight public comment forms were received at the June eighth hearing, and those are now included as an additional attachment, attachment six. Five additional public comments, as I mentioned before, are included in attachment seven. Those were received after June eighth, but prior publication of the staff report for this evening. And then there was a supplemental packet that was distributed to your commission containing a fif- five additional public comments that was released on July fifth, so also after the most recent staff report. And then today, I've distributed a hard copy of those materials to you. So Commissioner Capri, I apologize. Um, I didn't realize any of the Commissioners were going to be remote, so I do not have a digital copy um, available right now, but I can probably rustle that up before too long. But I'll, I'll be describing what was in those as well in a later slide.
Okay.
So some background on what's requested on this um, in this application. So the applicants requested a parking variance, and this would reduce the minimum number of required parking spaces on the property by forty parking spaces. The parking variance is requested in order to accommodate future renovations that are contemplated prime uh, and are limited to the second floor. And so these would be renovations and additional spaces being activated. So it would affect the occupancy, loading, and parking capacities of the cultural center because it would be the same use going on, but there would be additional spaces in which to conduct those uses. Although the structure itself, in terms of square footage and gross floor area, would not be changing, just the usable space would be changing. Future interior improvements related to this request, they're not part of the parking variance, but they're what's triggering the our discussion tonight because they're preparing for these, are the addition and activation of a two hundred and sixteen-seat theater, a seven hundred and seventy-one-square-foot office space, a ninety-three-square-foot classroom, and a twenty-two-seat dance classroom. And these are also discussed in another item that's going to come up a few different times in this presentation as a phasing uh, phase three of a concept master site development plan that was approved in, by the Planning Commission in two thousand and twelve, but which expired in August of two thousand and twenty-two. So this is an aerial map looking at the subject property. So we've got uh, shared, it's at four hundred each, four hundred and fifteen East Sheridan Street. Size of the property is one one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six square feet or approximately two point five-five acres. It's located in the Institutional Zoning District. It's that, on this slide, as we look at that, the, the whitish color that's at the center where the cultural center is, represents the Institutional District, we see R two zoning districts surrounding that site. And then to the south of the property, we see C three or Central Business District. This is from the application materials, and this is an overview site plan of the property. This slide shows a second floor floor plan, so this is where the renovations would be contemplated for by the applicant. And the blue boxes represent where those renovations are proposed for. The application materials included a number of items, uh, including what we would typically request, but I wanted to highlight the items that are in there just for discussion purposes. Exhibit A is included, uh, review of off-street parking requirements is provided by the applicant, a parking demand study, Newburgh Cultural District Parking Management Plan, map of the Cultural District parking options, and then there were additional materials related to title report noticing site plan, floor plan, as well as applicant narrative associated with responding to the applicable criteria. One of the things I wanted to clarify too is on the staff report, pages seven through thirteen, there's a series of references or a series of items that are depicted, but they weren't really sourced clearly. So I wanted to highlight those. Thank you, Doug, for bringing that to my attention. And so what those come from is the parking demand study that the applicant had submitted. So that's what those are discussing and highlighting. The staff report also includes a basic timeline associated with the site, in part because both items with the, the recent history associated with the site as well as the site's overall history from when it was created and built and the use it's gone through over the years includes this graphic that's associated with the, the site's uh, history and timeline. So currently, there are seventy-seven spaces associated with the subject property. Fifty-three of those are permanent parking spaces and twenty-four are gravel parking that are used intermittently. Those are located on the west side of the property. If you look at this graphic in the upper right-hand corner, that would be on the left side of the graphic. So prior, prior land use approval included a condition of approval. So this is going back to that two thousand and twelve Planning Commission approval, requiring that future parking variance request, instead of being processed as a type-two uh, process, would go through type-three procedures, bringing them here to the Planning Commission for consideration. This slide highlights, and this is also from the staff report, highlights several of the land use decisions associated with the property. You see those beginning in two thousand and eight, sorry, I had a, a little moment there, I apologize. And then carrying through to some of the more recent ones, the one that we're really going to mention the most this evening is the most relevant to this discussion, not that any of the other ones are necessarily irrelevant, but the most relevant for tonight is related to that concept master site development plan from two thousand and twelve. And so that's where some of the prior conditions of approval come from, as well as when we reference phases of things, that's what those are coming from. So at this time, phases one and two improvements have primarily been completed, and phase three ones are those interior renovations that are being considered. So with that, I want to go ahead and jump into the applicable criteria associated with this. And one of the things with variances that I wanted to highlight for the commission was the, the purpose of considering variances. And so just reading this one to you, it is the intent that variances may be granted in order to prevent or lessen practical difficulties and unnecessary physical hardships inconsistent with the objectives of this code as would result from a strict or literal interpretation of this code. So that purpose is what we would try and consider in grounding decisions associated with the variance, as well as what were considered and the findings that were used in creating the staff report. So variance criteria A, that strict or literal interpretation enforcement of the specified regulation result in practical difficulty or unnecessary, unnecessary physical hardship inconsistent with the objectives of this code. So pursuant to N M C fifteen point four, four, zero, point zero, five, zero, which is associated with parking requirements, the parking requirements can be reduced for shared parking if the operating hours for the operating hours of joint uses. So in a nutshell, what we're talking about here is that they have multiple types of activities that could be going on at any one time. And those might overlap in a way that allows them to reduce the base parking requirements commensurate with some of the standards we have associated with joint uses. So you start with the base, and the applicant has the opportunity to reduce the parking requirements for joint or overlapping uses. That resulted in the creation of multiple scenarios, and one of the ones that's discussed in the staff report is a weekday scenario and a weekend scenario. The weekday scenario where either the theater or the ballroom are at fifty percent capacity and the remainder of the facility may function at full capacity. Or the weekend scenario where either the theater or the ballroom are at full capacity, but the remainder of the facility would be at no more than fifty percent capacity. And these are scenarios that were contemplated in that two thousand and twelve decision as well. So there's a consistency from prior land use decisions with this. So the application, so continuing with this criteria, the application materials created facility loading scenarios and calculated the minimum number of off-street parking required pursuant to the Newburgh Municipal Code minimum requirements. And so the minimum requirements are the code section cited fifteen point four, four, zero, point zero, three, zero. The joint use portion of that is related to fifteen point four, four, zero, point zero, five, zero. And they tie back to the applicant's narrative and their review of off-street parking requirements associated with exhibit A of the applicant materials. So because the applicant is requesting a reduction in the minimum number of parking spaces required based on reduced facility loading scenarios, but does not provide a mechanism to ensure that the reduced loading of the facility will be enforced in the future, a condition of approval was applied or was included in the findings in the condition of approval. And that is that the applicant ensure that the Chahalem Cultural Center's ballroom and theater are not used simultaneously by modifying the Newburgh Cultural District's intergovernmental agreement or by recording a commensurate instrument prior to issuance of building permits associated with the theater, green room, office, uh, dance classroom, thirty-one-seat classroom, or other phase three and four improvements from the concept master site development plan from two thousand and twelve. And it's a little cut off in the bottom of the slide here, but the applicant is also, has submitted a request for uh, alternative language to this condition of approval for your consideration. And I, this slide highlights the calculation of the different loading scenarios and how we ended up with the one where we'll talk about the one hundred and thirty-five spaces that are kind of contemplated throughout these. And so you see on the left-hand column, the base parking requirement numbers, the um, the reduced parking requirement for joint uses that is calculated based on those weekday and weekend scenarios. And they contemplate use in the ballroom versus use in the theater. And so there end up being four different scenarios depending on whether we're talking about a loaded ballroom or a loaded theater. And so what it comes out to, and this is, this is trying to be very clear about how we got to, they're asking for a reduction of forty spaces. And so we've got a, the highest scenario for loading was one hundred and thirty-five parking spaces being required, and that's the weekday scenario with the ballroom in use. There are fifty-three permanent onsite parking spaces. There are forty-two on-street parking spaces, and the, and the applicant requested a reduction of forty spaces. Uh, sorry, I wanted to highlight there's, sorry, fifty-three parking spaces on the site that are permanent, and then forty-two adjacent on-street parking. And one of the things, and this is what's noted on the bottom of the slide here, is the, there is a provision associated with residential multifamily development that allows an on-street parking waiver, where you're allowed to use, where an applicant can choose to take credit for on, adjacent on-street parking in certain situations, but that's limited to residential multifamily development. So the applicant used that in the calculations in their application materials for this, and so staff went ahead and evaluated this amongst the, kind of the variance request and made that part of that. So in addition to the forty spots that would be reduced, the, the request became forty spaces and use of adjacent on-street parking, since that was what was requested. So the staff report, going through the analysis associated with this still criteria A, um, references the Comprehensive Plan, looking at what some of those those foundational concepts are associated with strict or literal interpretation of our existing code. So going back to the Comprehensive Plan, and these ones listed here in the bullets were cited in the staff report. They include that the city should, the city should encourage innovative design and ensure that developments consider site characteristics and the impact on surrounding areas. That's urban design goals and policies per, that's found in urban design goals and policies, number one, policy J one. The maximize, maximize pedestrian bicycle and non-motorized travel throughout the city, transportation goals and policies, goal five. And the city shall encourage flexibility in design review and interpretation of policies and regulation by ensuring that functional design and community benefit remain as the principal review criteria. Consider variance procedures where interpretation of regulations impede fulfillment of these criteria, and that's in urban design policy J one M. So what we looked at for this is that the applicant is basically requesting a variance on two basic factors. The premise that onsite uses are compatible and joint uses will not overburden the surrounding area, and that there is adequate on-street parking available to support the activities in lieu of creating and maintaining parking greater than what's already on-site. But those are some of the two premises in the application materials. And staff found in, in the findings, because one onsite joints, onsite joint uses are compatible, so that that, that waiver of those, that reduction of those base requirements is appropriate, are compatible, and the on-street parking waiver is a mechanism whereby the applicant or the adjacent parking could be used towards the minimum, the modification of the code would alleviate practical difficulties associated with the site and meet the objectives noted in the staff report. So basically the finding was it's a consideration and that on-street parking waiver does exist, and if it's, if the Planning Commission concurs that it could be used as a, it would, the variance is intended to allow for uh, that a strict or literal interpretation enforcement of a specified regulation could be used to alleviate practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship. And so that would be one way of doing that as well as simply reducing the number of parking spaces that are required. So going to variance criteria B, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved or in involved or to the intended use of the property, which do not apply generally to other properties classified in the same zoning district. So staff found that because the subject property is smaller than other institutional zone, uh, other sites in the Institutional Zoning District in the city, and has proactively worked to address and manage the parking issues within the Newburgh Cultural District, the site possesses exceptional conditions involved in the use of the property and that do not generally apply to other properties in the Institutional Zoning District. And then criteria C, that stricter literal interpretation enforcement of the specified regulation would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by the owners of other properties classified by the same zoning district. So the, the staff report finds that the subject property is smaller than all other institutional sites in the city. Strict or literal interpretation of the onsite parking requirements would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other owners of other properties in the I zoning district. And that D, by granting the variant, that the granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege consistent with the limitations on other properties classified in the same zoning district. So the staff report lists in the finding that because the subject property is smaller than all other institutional sites in the city, but its uses are consistent with the intent of the I zoning district, as well as the, says here, P Q, that's public uh, public quasi-public, or is it? Okay, thank you. Public quasi-public land use designation in the Comprehensive Plan. The granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on the other properties classified with the same zoning district. And then variance or criteria E, that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially, materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity. So the, the parking studies findings stated that, and this is what was provided by the applicant in their application materials, that on a typical weekday evening with no major event at the cultural center, parking was found to be readily available within the cultural district, with more than one hundred parking stalls available during each hour observed from three P M to nine P M. Given the ample amount of parking available, no spill over into the adjacent neighborhoods was apparent. Additionally, the highest period of facility loading and resultant parking demand is expected to occur on weekdays when the ballroom is in use, which would require one hundred and thirty-five parking spaces. So what this is finding is that the, the criteria and the parking study are applicable. And so we're finding that the, the time at which the study was conducted in the loading scenario of one hundred and thirty-five that we've talked about for that kind of ballroom weekday scenario, that it's applicable to when the parking study was conducted. Then additionally, because the applicant's highest period of facility loading and the resultant parking demand is expected to occur on weekdays, the time period used in the parking demand study, the findings are applicable to assessing the extent to which ongoing activities of the cultural center could impact residential areas. Because the parking demand, demand study, because the parking demand study found that an ample amount of parking was available and no spill over into the adjacent neighborhoods was apparent during the highest period of facility loading, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare or materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity. So that was the last of the applicable criteria that were evaluated in the staff report. I wanted to highlight here the condition of approval that was uh, that was in the staff report as well as the applicant submitted alternative condition of approval. So here on this slide, we have uh, the one from the staff report reads, the applicant shall ensure that the Chahalem Cultural Center's ballroom and theater are not used simultaneously by modifying the Newburgh Cultural District's intergovernmental agreement or by recording a commensurate dis- instrument prior to issuance of building permits associated with the theater, green room, office, dance classroom, and thirty-one-seat classroom, or other phase three and four improve, phase three and four improvements from the concept master site development plan from two thousand and twelve. The applicant submitted alternative condition of approval states, the applicant shall ensure that the Chahalem Cultural Center's simultaneous use of the ballroom and theater shall not result in facility occupancy beyond a parking demand, one hundred and thirty-five parking spaces by modifying the Newburgh Cultural District's intergovernmental agreement or by recording a commensurate instrument prior to issuance of building permits associated with the theater, green room, office, dance classroom, thirty-one-seat classroom, or other phase three or four improvements from the concept master site development plan from two thousand and twelve. And so those are the, the items highlighted are the primary differences between those pieces of text. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order two, zero, two, three, dash, eleven, which approves the requested variance with the attached conditions of approval found in exhibit B.
Well, thank you, Clay. So now we're going to move on to um, public testimony. Uh, the applicant will have fifteen minutes, and the primary opponent will have fifteen minutes to speak as well. Everyone else will be limited to five minutes. Yeah, so we do ask that you try to hold close to that, and um, Commissioners are allowed to ask questions. Uh, persons given testimony. And so at this time, I'd like to offer the applicant the opportunity to come forward. Just please come up to the desk. Uh, there's a little button on the microphone, and then state your name for the record.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Commissioner Newton-Curtis. Um, I totally forgot to say that I live within five hundred feet of the um, cultural center, but I'm not going to let that affect my vote one way or the other.
Thank you.
Should have moved it before I turned it on. It's a horrible noise. Hi, um, my name's Sean. Sean Andrews. I'm the Executive Director of the Chahalem Cultural Center. Good evening. Uh, I have been the Executive Director of the C C C since two thousand and seventeen and have over twenty years in facility and event management. I've helped manage event centers, student unions, theater companies, dance schools, and then a circus. I love what I do, and it is a joy to do it here in Newburgh. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the C C C and our request for a variance to reduce the minimum number required off-street parking spaces as part of our plan to renovate existing spaces and create a performing arts wing inside our historic home. The C C C is an independent five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit with a mission to inspire and enrich lives by connecting community and culture. We're located at four, one, five East Sheridan Street, inside the old central school building first built in nineteen thirty-five. A brief history, uh, in the mid-nineties, a growing school-aged population and concerns about the structural integrity of our building led to a new school being built and students relocating there. This began a period of decline that saw the unused property go to blight. The Chahalem Parks and Recreation Department bought the property for one dollar with a promise to keep it in the public domain and set forth with community leaders on a visioning effort that struck upon the idea of a cultural center. And in two thousand and five, the Chahalem Center Association was born. Fundraising commenced, and in two thousand and ten, after sitting empty for fifteen years, the Chahalem Cultural Center opened its doors with newly renovated meeting rooms, artist studios, fine art galleries, offices, and a community lobby. Since that time, the C C C has worked steadily to continue redeveloping the property. Since that time, the CCC has worked steadily to continue redeveloping the property with additions of a ballroom, a rear lobby, a finished parking lot, and most recently, a culinary classroom. The CCC has grown from modest beginnings to become the largest provider of art services in Yam Hill County and is a leader in Oregon's arts and culture landscape. We provide equitable arts access through robust education opportunities, year-round arts programming, fine art galleries, professional facilities, community gathering spaces, forums on critical issues, quality live performances and unique heritage events. Our financial assistance programs guarantee that no one in the community is ever turned away from an experience with culture for a lack of funds. Last year alone, CCC awarded over $20,000 in scholarships to classes and camps and over $15,000 in event sponsorships. We're proud to play a part in weddings, quinceañeras, graduation ceremonies, birthday parties, bar mitzvahs, batzmatzahs, school fundraisers, nonprofit galas, um, church services, blood drives and so much more. The CCC is a center of this community because the CCC centers community. We value diverse input from all of Newburg's communities and proactively solicit their participation at every level. We're governed by a volunteer board of directors and partner on programming decisions with local leaders like George Fox University, ADEC, Providence, Newburg School District, Chahalem Valley Chamber of Commerce, Newburg Downtown Coalition, UNIDOS and more. We have a diverse staff, twelve FTE and a growing volunteer list of over four hundred names. We are an organization that depends on the strength and goodwill of our community. And we manage our spaces in ways that recognize the trust our community places in us. We manage our spaces professionally to support the most public good. We take calendar management very seriously. To ensure that everyone who uses the center has the best experience possible, we have a number of systems in place, refined over thirteen years of successful operations. We utilize a space reservation platform called Amelia to ensure our spaces are never double booked. We have a designated full-time staff member who holds primary responsibility for maintaining the space use calendar and proactively addresses scheduling concerns. We host bi-weekly all-staff calendar review meetings to catch anything that might slip through a crack. And we host pre-event meetings for all internal and external programming. These meetings begin months in advance and are wide-ranging. They're designed to help us better understand the events happening at CCC and to determine expected attendance to set appropriate staffing levels, screen for conflicts and manage parking successfully. To best manage parking in and around the Newburgh Cultural Cultural District, the CCC takes a leadership role. We have accepted the responsibility of maintaining a joint joint use calendar between the city, library, CPRD, our neighbors and ourselves. We help manage the city's street closure process for all events occurring in the district, work directly with law enforcement to address concerns, participate in meetings of the Newburgh Cultural District Board, provide annual reports to the city council on its activities and communicate regularly with district residents. We take parking very seriously. We live in a neighborhood and we are good neighbors. We work hard to keep the activities in the district from negatively interfering with the lives of the people who live there. We work directly with our neighbors to craft a parking action plan and continue to implement it for all events with exceptional parking needs. We proactively communicate with our neighbors about these events via email, standard mail and social media. When our neighbors bring forward parking concerns, we are responsive. We take immediate action to relieve their concern quickly and then make plans to prevent similar situations from arising in the future. We are actively engaged in the city of Newburg's ongoing planning conversations and participate in city-led parking committees, studies and other related projects. In addition to municipal efforts, CCC has commissioned its own parking studies to better understand our everyday impact on our neighbors. We do a lot of different things for this community. And we've learned over thirteen years of operation, the value of flexibility. To maintain our flexibility, to meet the needs of our community, we ask for an amendment to the proposed language of exhibit B. We are in complete agreement with the city's desire to document our responsibility to prevent overburdening neighborhood parking resources. This is a responsibility we do not shy away from. Flexibility, however, is key to successfully managing the CCC's many uses. The language initially proposed in exhibit B is rigid and prohibits simultaneously using the ballroom and the theater in any capacity. The CCC does not desire to simultaneously operate a theater at maximum capacity while operating a ballroom at maximum capacity. In practice, there is little demand for us ever to do so. CCC's ballroom seats crowds of more than 250 guests only a handful of times in a given year and never by surprise. There are, however, many common sense scenarios where a theater and a ballroom might be used concurrently at reduced capacities without creating a burden on neighborhood parking. These uses might include celebrating a quinceañera in the ballroom while a small group of technicians and designers prepare for an upcoming opening night upstairs in the theater. It could include a bridegroom and their pastor rehearsing for their wedding in the ballroom tomorrow while guests enjoy a concert in the theater today. Or perhaps children and families watching a mid-morning matinee in the theater while catering staff prepare for an evening retirement party in the ballroom. We have proposed amended language to exhibit B that ensures the CCC does not overburden available parking resources by overscheduling, yet allows the flexibility to successfully manage the needs of our community. The Chahalem Cultural Center is a community-led organization and relies on the support of this community to thrive. We would never want to act in any way that would damage the trust this community places on us. We seek this parking variance because we want to continue redeveloping the old central school into a resource Newburgh will cherish for generations to come. We want to build a performing arts wing to better serve Newburgh. We are a community partner because we are part of this community. That is who we are. That is who we have always been. And that is who we will always be. Thank you for your time and for your consideration of this request. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And we do have, I believe, William Reynolds with us, a traffic engineer with RBT Consultants, who can speak more directly to the everyday impact of our activities on parking demand.
And that is not me. He's on Zoom and he has a prepared statement to for you. So we would like to give him a minute to talk.
Okay, if you're ready, go ahead. Just state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is William Reynolds with RBT Consultants and thanks Sean and members of Planning Commission uh, for letting me join today. And Sean, I enjoyed seeing all those pictures. I'm used to talking to parking uh, graphics. So it was refreshing to see something a little different. So I'm just here to briefly provide a summary of the parking demand study we completed just to provide some additional context on typical parking conditions in the area. So to begin our work, my team completed a field inventory of all the on-street uh, and public off-street parking within the boundaries of the cultural districts. So that included one hundred and sixty-three parking stalls. So that's the Waterwise Garden Lot uh, at Hancock and Blaine, the paved lot at the cultural center itself, the parking in front of the library and all on-street parking within the cultural district. So this did this, this number one hundred and sixty-three stalls does not include any parking on the residential sides of the streets within the district. So in order to measure current demand, uh, we selected a Thursday in October to represent typical weekday conditions. Uh, in the parking industry, we try to select uh, midweek weekdays in the spring or fall when when school is in session. So we're capturing typical demand. And in this context, uh, that typical demand is what's driving uh, the the hundred and thirty-five parking stall requirement for the site with the additional uh, square footage. So on this typical day, this is allows us to assess what a typical day would look like once that additional development comes online. So on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, once per hour between three and nine PM, we counted all vehicles parked within the cultural district. We actually expanded that and include all all residential blocks within one block walk of the building. Um, and so for reference on that particular day, the cultural center activities were fairly typical. There were various events in classrooms going on in six different areas of the center. And there was uh, one smaller event going on in the ballroom. So within that hundred and sixty-three stall cultural district area, we observed more than a hundred available parking stalls during every hour of the study. Uh, so the peak demand we observed was fifty-two vehicles parked between four and five PM. So in other words, at no point did any uh, the parking demand exceed about thirty-two percent usage of of the available parking supply within the area. And there was no indication of any spill over into the residential areas. So this indicates to us that there is ample capacity to serve additional trips to the cultural center within the existing parking supply without causing any additional parking constraints in the area. I know that there were a lot of scenarios, a lot of different numbers floating around. Uh, I think most simply, uh, the the simplest way to think about it is that the additional uh, square footage on the second floor uh, comes with a requirement for uh, essentially anticipation of forty additional parked vehicles uh, compared to what we were out there measuring. Uh, so you can sort of compare that that forty additional demand to uh, more than a hundred parking stalls available during these peak times on a weekday to sort of put it into context of of the overall change in parking demand on a typical weekday. So uh, in our assessment, uh, the the area can can certainly absorb this level of additional demand or or put another way, uh, building those forty additional stalls on-site would likely simply go unused for most, most of the year. Um, and and the reason for building those would largely be for for major events, which as Sean has discussed, is is a big priority of working with the neighbors to address those those large events. Um, and and those are the times when a parking action plan is is put into place to ensure that neighbors don't have access parking in front of don't have any issues parking in front of their home. So uh, with that, I'll hand it back over to Sean for some additional remarks, but I am here and available if you do have any specific questions about the parking study. Thank you.
Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, thank you. Um, any commissioners with questions?
Yeah, hi. Thank you for that presentation. I wonder if you can tell us a little more about the parking action plan? Um, and how that works, the processes around that?
Yeah. Parking action plan uh, exists for events that are large, primarily outdoor and often include street closures. Um, public festivals or large public events often will close down Sheridan Street um, for the two blocks there in front of the cultural center, which does take, oh, some thirty or so parking spaces out of circulation because they're in the the uh, street closure there. So when um, it is determined that an event is going to have more um, parking needs than will be in the in the district at the time we enter into the, we we unroll the parking action plan. Um, what we do is we have a um, like a spreadsheet that does some calculations that has lists of all the different amounts of parking in the area. And you say, hey, we're we're expecting, let's say a thousand people. And then you divide a thousand by three point two five to get the number of cars that we expect to have there. So the number of parking spaces we would have to have there. And once you take the number of spaces in the area and you subtract those thirty or so that are part of the street closure, then you take the number of parking spaces your expected attendance tells you is going to have to, you're going to need. And you um, do some math and figure out what the difference between that number and the number of available parking spots is. And so if you need to find more parking spots, uh, we have a plan that includes putting some signage out in the area, reaching out to local business owners, to owners of local lots. Um, some of those lots include um, First Federal Savings and Loan, First Community Credit Union, the Kelly Group, Wells Fargo Bank. Um, we have the Waterwise Lot down the street there, Willcutts Company Realtors, Wine Country Antiques. Um, and then of course, the the larger Second Street Lot um, behind the city there. And so when we decide that we need more parking spaces than we will have because of expected attendance, we um, uh, we we reach out to those business owners and ask them if we can use them. And almost always they say yes, I've never actually heard them say no, because the activities we're proposing are largely after their business hours. And then we um, have a plan for where to put signage out and around the district that says event parking and has arrows pointing to specific directions to try and help people find um, the available parking spot and help try to help them um, take the path of least resistance and say, oh, look, the sign's pointing me that way. I'll go that way rather than say, hey, I wonder what's on-street parking down this side. And so as it happens, we had a couple of large events in the last few days. We had our lavender festival this weekend, which is one of our biggest events of the year. We had our tunes on Tuesday, um, which came back on Tuesday, which is not a cultural center event, but is a community event that happens on our plaza and includes a street closure. And so we used the parking plan for both of those. And uh, you know, I went out and I canvassed the neighborhood, the pictures of parking signs in place, took pictures of available parking spaces, took pictures of um, signs that neighbors can um, access through the Newburgh Library that say no parking in the space so they can put those out in front of their lawn. Um, you know, for those people who don't have uh, like a driveway to park in. Um, and I I um, I I saw those signs being observed. Um, also, I'll say that while I was walking about this weekend and on Tuesday, I spoke to a lot of neighbors. And um, you know, none of them really expressed to me any particular concern. Um, we're we're pretty happy with what was going on at the cultural center. We're thankful for me um, being so proactive about it. In particular, um, I I came across one of our neighbors who lives up on Franklin. Um, his name's David Fitzgerald, and he sent me an email later in the day just to say that um, he hopes to have a great day. And thanks again for your concern about parking problems. So um, you know, uh, we try very, very hard to to make sure that the people who live in the district um, get something positive from living next to the cultural center. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. That's a really comprehensive answer. Thank you. I just have one follow-up question though. To what extent do you think you're successful in getting um, people to park further away in those different car parking areas as opposed to in the residential districts?
Um, I think that, you know, we're reasonably successful in that. I definitely saw anecdotally saw people turning into those parking lots um, and walking to and from their cars. I saw people walking up to Tunes on Tuesday uh, just the other day um, from downtown, looked like they had parked behind downtown, maybe stopped in at a local business. Um, had a drink or so and then walked on up. So I think we're reasonably successful. I think especially once you get more than like a block from the cultural center, I think people often will look for really close parking. But if it's not there, then we'll we'll just look for an event parking spot. Um, and then to be perfectly honest, a lot of those lots are closer than most of the neighborhood parking spots who are really a more desirable um, option for most folks.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Wright. I have a question on how many bike racks um, are located at the CCC?
That's a very good question. Um, I don't rightly have on the ready. I'm an easy answer.
I know there's one ounce front uh, between the library and the front entrance.
And I believe there's one on the back entrance, but in the parking lot entrance. I believe there's one perhaps in the park, like on the east side of the building there.
Do you know how many spaces those would accommodate if you have bikers uh, using that mode of transportation?
I do not know that, but I could certainly find out for you.
Right, Doug. Um, do you know if how many spaces the library has for bike racks? Off the top of your head?
I do not.
Okay, are there any in the Waterwise Garden?
No.
Okay, um.
And the reason there's none in the Waterwise Garden is because there's no building in the Waterwise Garden. It's just a parking lot that was constructed by ODOT as part of the improvements to Hancock.
Okay, so ODOT owns it?
No.
No.
City owns it. ODOT constructed it. When they widened Hancock Street and it can only be used as a parking lot.
Can it be used as a parking lot for cars?
It's used, that's what it's for, parking lot.
Uh, for cars and bikes?
If they could find some space to put any bike racks, because that would displace either parking spaces and or landscaping. And we do. When that was constructed, it was constructed with perimeter landscaping.
Um, does the cultural community center um, have any uh, future bike racks?
We don't have any concrete designs, but we do talk about it from time to time. We would particularly like to get some that um, are uh, bike racks, but also works of art, which I think is um, kind of on-brand for us. So we talk about it, yeah.
Have there ever been closed unlockables of bike parking and or storage considered?
Not to my knowledge.
Right. Um, this one is for the city planning commissioner, right? Um, is there a dedicated bike path on the Newburg's transportation plan uh, for future designation of a dedicated bike lane to the bike parking areas for the CCC?
No, bike lanes are required on our collector and arterial streets. And the streets around the cultural center are all local residential streets. There is bike lanes on Hancock.
Is the city of Newburgh willing to dedicate a bike bike path to CCC?
That's not a question I could answer. That would be a policy choice from the city council. Any other questions from commissioners?
I I have a question. Um, I would just like to know
Um, I would just like to know why. The forty spaces are being asked for, what is going to happen to the space that they are currently? Using. You know, for off-street parking. Oh, it looked like the changes to the building were interior. So I'm just curious.
This is, I'm, I'm Debbie Clink. I'm a land use planner. And the applicant on the. Uh, proposal. And um, the forty spaces are, what are we, we are asking to reduce? It's the variance that we're asking to not be required to develop forty additional parking spaces on the site. Um, if we were to be required to develop those forty spaces, we would have to either remove. The park or the plaza or all of the areas around the building that are being used for um. Public meeting spaces and public, you know, assembly and that sort of thing. So we would like to reduce the parking by forty spaces. To preserve all of those um public realm spaces that surround the building. Does that?
Oh.
Question?
Okay, yes, that did. It, it's a more theoretical than, than actual.
Yes, the, the activating the spaces on the second floor of the building, the spaces are already there.
Right.
You're not being used for anything. So activating those spaces is triggering new parking. And what we are requesting is to not be required to build that parking on the site.
Uh, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Commissioner Griffiths, I have a couple of questions. Can you confirm that the capacity of the ballroom will be four hundred and the theater two hundred and fifty?
So we are still working on designs for the theater. We expect that the final count of um, um, seats in there will actually be two twenty-five. So that's our best guess. Um, the fire code capacity of the ballroom is technically, I think, seven fifty-two, I want to say. Um, events that are over four hundred people are exceedingly rare. Um, events over three hundred people are exceedingly rare.
I should have started by first thanking you for what you do. Uh, I hope everyone in Newburgh. Uh, appreciates this resource. Most communities don't have it. And I'd also like to put uh this in perspective to the extent that I can. With the capacity of the ballroom, even if we went to the fire marshal's capacity of seven hundred and fifty-two is, but as you said, is rarely if ever. Uh, realized. And the capacity of the theater at two hundred and fifty, you still would be five hundred people short of what attended. Toons on Tuesday. So uh, I'm not trying to minimize uh. The issue at hand, but I'm also not trying to, I don't want to us to overblow that. And if we can accommodate what was a conservative estimate of fifteen hundred people at Toons on Tuesday. I certainly think that we could accommodate even the maximum number of people in the ballroom in the theater.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from commissioners?
Yes, I have uh questions and comments. Um, speaking of the uh. What is it, requirement? All right, let me back up. Um, page two of fifteen attachment one applicant states project is to activate the second floor of the CCC. If you have the intention of no longer using the gravel parking lot containing twenty-four spaces. It's actually a deficit of eighty spaces if you. Um, remove that. Um, if you have a hundred and thirty-five capacity and fifty-three onsite and you phase out that twenty-four gravel lot. You then have fifty-eight needed spaces with a forty. Uh, reduction variance in parking spaces that still needs eighteen and twenty um parking spaces and then is in the waterworks. But. Um, if, as you state, um. The intention of green space. Being important to this community, um, if you were to take that out. Um, why are you? Uh, taking that out as a request in this C five?
If I understand you correctly, um, and, and perhaps I'm, I'm misunderstanding, uh, we, we have no plans to make any. Changes to the gravel lot at this time in any, in any way. So those spaces such as they are will continue to exist.
Okay.
Exactly as they are.
Cause that was in our uh staff report that you were seeking not using that area.
This is true. Uh, it's.
For parking.
Super complicated math. I think that's why Clay had a whole entire si- um slide dedicated to how we are calculating the variance. But what um essentially it ties back to that twenty twelve approval on the site. That set the bar for how many spaces were required and that initial twenty twelve review. Um, varied or reduced the number of parking spaces that were required and the gravel lot was never included in that number. So it was never in the total, so it never has to be taken back out of the total at this point. So the variance is for forty spaces, not eighty spaces. Um, and the, the gravel lot, you know, at, at one point was potentially going to be used for parking, but. It has morphed into a more of a community space at this point. I think certainly during COVID, it became like an outdoor classroom. And then outdoor space that the cultural center could use and that's been just continued past COVID as this is. A place where we can have people assemble and use. And so the intention is to not turn that back into a parking lot at any time.
Okay, that is actually wonderful news, because that does leave you with the seventy-seven original spaces that the planning commission twenty twelve variants. Um, targeted. Um. Okay, will you be submitting a new concept master plan? Uh, since it's expired in August of twenty twenty-two?
Um, it's, it's not required. Um, all of the changes that are happening to the building are interior, so there, we aren't. Making any exterior changes to be able to activate the new spaces. Um. They might be able to speak to this a little bit better than I, but I don't think that it's, it's a requirement of the code any longer. Am I correct on that?
My understanding in the research associated with this variance is they do not need to renew or extend or come back for a new master concept plan.
I was just wondering if you were going to.
Essentially, the, the spaces we're requesting to activate will fill the building. So. These two, in two phases, the um dance classroom, I think, is the third phase. And when that's done, then the building will be entirely filled. So there doesn't necessarily need, there's no concept, additional concept coming. But this is, this is going to max the building.
And then one last one, um, one of two. Um, if these properties are sold in the future that you hope for public parking spaces, the uh. Two hundred and something identified by your consultant. Um, if these properties are sold in the future, can you obtain a contract and reserve the right for sale of the property? And ensure any of the two hundred and seventy-six private lots for CCC parking are available as outlined in your P P M P?
Um, I, I don't know that I can speak to that. The building is owned by Jahan Parks and Recreation. We are their tenant, so um. Any contract about selling the building uh would, would not be one I would enter into.
Is Don Clements available?
He's not um on air, we're sending that.
Are you testifying this evening? There may I reserve to call you later on as a question here for representative for that, for Don Clements? Thank, thank you. All right, and then the one last uh thing I'm going to throw out here is uh. You did uh comment on Newburg's planning. Um. Newburg's Conference of Plan and Transportation is uh if you. You don't want to build more parking lots to encourage more parking. So I would like to know if you would consider or. Upon additions of approval, uh initiate additional bike racks and consider. In lieu of parking credit for I-zone specific to NCD and CCC identifying. As you do identify an inequity in property to accommodate the minimal required parking spaces. Causing undue hardships, I would propose the bike racks. Um, in the waterworks slot, if applicable, otherwise to be on the CCC properties. And the city of Newburgh to agree to dedicate a bike lane, hopefully. Uh, to bike in parking storage and, but, well, to bike in storage. Uh, and a proposed inter, intergovernmental agreement with CCD, NCD, EP, CRPD. The city of Newburgh to cooperate or cooperate with the historical society, society Lake Oswego Trolley. City of San Francisco, City of Newburgh, Oregon, and others procuring trolleys. Um, you have a street coming next to you on Blaine, the riverfront of. District plan calls for uh putting a trolley from, in the future, from Avalon down to there. And it would be in a fantastic addition to the city and complement your parking needs all at the same time. Um, would you be willing to enter into an IG agreement to do that with the uh? City and other cooperative partners?
Yeah, we absolutely would. I, I had many conversations with uh city manager Hannah, I believe it was at the time, who was really um. Had a lot of ideas about the trolley. We, we absolutely would be, yeah, that'd be a fun project to work on.
Right, thank you. No further questions?
If there are no further questions, I um like to thank you for your testimony. You will be invited back up after, for the testimony for rebuttal. At this time, I'd like to invite um Robert Sapi up for um as a principal opponent. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Robert Suppy and thank you for the additional time to speak. I don't intend to take it all up, but. Um, uh, let me start by saying that I'm a, a fan and supporter of both CPRD and with the cultural center. And I think that both are very good for the community. I appreciate the programs that they have and how they are a benefit to us. My opposition tonight comes strictly from my position that the city code should be followed. And I'll explain how that applies to this variance request. And I'll explain that handout later when I get to that. Um, so that I don't forget, I'll request now to have the record left open for seven days so I can provide complete details from my testimony. The request before you is different from most quasi judicial requests for several reasons. It's in the form of a variance as it doesn't meet the standard code requirements. It requests the use of on-street parking in an institutional zone and it relies on the parking management plan. I will show that there's a no allowance for the use of on-street parking for several reasons. I will also show that the parking management plan. Has not served its goals and has often not been followed well. I think the greatest failing in the application has to do with the attempted, with the attempted use to include the on-street parking surrounding the property. There are several reasons I think that fails. The first is that, as cited in the findings, a variance may be granted with the application of the code is inconsistent. With the objective of the code. According to the code, part of its purpose is to quote, provide for adequate off-street parking. End quote. This variance is expressly in opposition to that part of the purpose of the code. The next is that the variance requests that all forty-two on-street spaces are included. Regardless of whether or not they are available. For many events, the fourteen that are located on the north side of Sheridan are not available and they're sure, therefore should not be included. That would change the variance request from forty to fifty-four spaces. The third reason I think it fails clearly was clearly stated by staff in the findings. On page thirty-one, it states, quote, "The applicant incorrectly applies the on-street parking credit." Because the on-street parking credit is located under the residential types portion of the new municipal code table of uses. Whereas the Jahan Cultural Center uses our char- categorized under institutional types, end quote. I don't think it gets much clearer than that. Quite simply, the application is trying to use a residential zone benefit in an institutional zone. Where it doesn't apply. The staff report attempts to dismiss this discrepancy with some fairly interesting logic. It relies on the fact that the property is smaller than all other institutional sites in Newburgh and therefore has exceptional conditions compared to others. The finding that follows that one makes a similar mark, argument. Think carefully about this argument. It claims that because this institutional is properly, is this institutional property is smaller than others. It shouldn't have to follow the same rules as the others. Does that seem appropriate? I think not. Imagine if a residential developer came to you with the same argument. That is, they want to build a large house on a property that's too small to accommodate the setback, maximum lot coverage, minimum parking. Or other code requirements. The developer argues that this quote would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by the owners of other properties. Classified in the same zoning district, end quote. That's a variance requirement. Because the other properties are larger and can more easily accommodate the coded requirements. Would that be convincing to this commission? I hope and expect not. If the commission were to go with this argument, which I argue it should not. It should note that there is nothing to tie the exception to allowing conditions from a different zoning use. Instead, the commission should simply not count the on-street parking spaces. But use the exception to allow a variance of eighty-two parking spaces. It's just as easily justified. I realize that the optics of reducing the parking requirement by sixty percent may not look good. But that's the reality of what you're being asked. Please don't hide behind the code that doesn't apply to this use at all. The last reason that counting the on-street parking spaces is not supported in the code. Lies in the language of the code that follows the allowance of counting those spaces, which was left out every time that's cited. That language state, that these, that language states that these spaces, quote. Cannot be counted if they could be removed by a planned future street widening. Or a bike lane on the street, end quote. Is there any reason to believe that these spaces could not be removed by a bike lane? Of course not. Clearly, they could be removed by a bike lane. For that reason, the code explicitly states that they cannot be included. I anticipate the argument that the bike lanes are not planned and therefore this doesn't apply. But this argument only works if one doesn't read the code as it's actually written. Had the code read, quote, "A planned road widening or bike lane," end quote, one could argue that the bike lane must also be planned. That's not how staff proposed the language, nor how it was approved. Simple rules of grammar separate the word planned from bike lane because of the presence of the article A before bike lane. The result is a second example of how the code prohibits counting on-street parking in this ca- spa- in this case. Excuse me. I would like to move on to the parking management plan. I was the neighborhood member of the cultural district board from its inception until late two thousand and eighteen. And when, was involved in the crafting of each version of that plan. I kind of chuckled when Sean mentioned the spreadsheet. I believe that's one that I authored. Um, I will note that is my understanding that the, the version of the plan, parking management plan that was submitted to you in the application. Has not been approved by the cultural district board, which is how previous versions have been approved. This application relies on the plan in a number of ways. For example, on page I six, it states, quote. Since the surrounding parking spaces on non-residential streets can easily accommodate any parking that cannot be handled onsite. End quote. On page I eight, it's claimed, quote, "Since its adoption in two thousand and sixteen." The parking management pla- that plan has effectively monitored available parking on the streets and public lots within the cultural district. What evidence of any monitoring has been provided to this commission? There are other references to the plan that claim that it is suffice to handle the parking needs of the district. I think experience shows otherwise. Commissioner Griffiths, you met, you said, quote, "If we can accommodate the fifteen hundred people at Toons. We should certainly be able to accommodate much smaller." Well, I agree if we actually did a good job of accommodating them at Toons. Um, and I'll get to it in just a moment. During the last lavender festival and Toons events. I did a parking count similar to what I did about a dozen times, number of years ago, and submitted them back then to the planning commission. The basic process is I walked around the district during the event, counted cars on each street. And then after the, and noted there were empty spaces after the event, I did the same thing, threw them all on a spreadsheet. Subtracting the ideas, if a car was there during the event. It wasn't there afterwards, it's likely to be event related. It's not perfect, but it's pretty darn good. Um. I also, the different parking areas were separated by the preferred spaces. For example, the cultural center lot. I also, the different parking areas were separated by the preferred spaces. For example, the cultural center lot. That's a preferred space. We want people to park there. Whereas and and the I included the on-street parking next to the uh cultural center. On the lots downtown, the streets downtown. And then also noted which streets were residential streets to see just where are these cars parking? So now, if you would look at the handouts I provided. You'll you'll see the results now. I gave you four pages. Two of them are spreadsheet. They're pretty hard to read because they're small and I suggest you don't. You're more than welcome to. But you don't need to look at them tonight. What is interesting are the summaries that I gave you on the two pages that are quite readable. For example, let's look at the lavender festival. By my count, there were three hundred and eighty-one vehicles related to the lavender festival. In the neighborhoods, seventy-two percent of the parking was taken up by vehicles related to the lavender festival. Uh, fifty-four percent. Of the vehicles that attended the lavender festival. Parked in these preferred areas. It means forty-six percent of the cars that were there for the lavender festival didn't park where we wanted them to. Um, and lastly, there were twenty-four residential streets, and by that I mean one side of a street that had zero available parking when I did the count. Toons was similar, not exactly the same. We'll talk at three hundred and seventy vehicles for the event. So when you look at these numbers, these hundred and thirty-five that we're talking about the requirement for parking. There were three hundred and seventy. There were three hundred and eighty. And you can see the numbers there. We did better. Uh, we had sixty-three percent of those vehicles. That were tied to Toons parked in the areas we wanted to, but that also means thirty-seven of them, thirty-seven percent did not. And I'm happy to answer questions on that when we get there. Skip that. Oh, I should note very importantly. That twenty-four vehicles at both events were in this gravel lot. Well, when the gravel lot gets shut down, as is proposed in here, and I believe that's a city requirement. Um, those twenty-four vehicles are very likely to be parking out in the neighborhood. Commissioner Newton Curtis, you asked about the success of using the remote locks. Um, you'd have to dig into my spreadsheets to see it, but rather than use anecdotes, I can tell you what I measured. Uh, these are the worst ones. I'll be I'll be fair. The lavender festival in the Willcutts lot. One out of twenty-two spaces was in use. Uh, first community. Two out of twelve spaces were in use. Others were definitely better. During Toons, the Willcutts lot, five of the twenty-two were in use. The Tykor lot, it was three oh twenty-two. So. Use of these lots that we'd like has been spied. Um, I think these numbers clearly refute the claim that non-residential streets accommodate all off-street parking. It also shows that the parking management pan plan has not succeeded during these events and containing parking in preferred parking areas. For you to approve this variance, you need to conclude that the parking management plan will satisfy these parking needs. I think it's clear that it has not, and that it will get worse when the gravel lot is removed, and there is nothing proposed to improve the situation. There are also examples of how the parking management plan has not been thoroughly followed. The plan, going all the way back to a version approved almost ten years ago, includes, quote. Permanent signage indicating the location of public parking lots within the cultural district will be installed. That signage doesn't exist. I helped to enact a temporary solution, drawing up maps with specific locations and directions for temporary signs. That's rarely been followed very well. The plan has a requirement of maintaining a matrix of maximum daily parking needs for the entire district. And then it will be published on the district's website. I don't believe that it's ever been done. That is a core piece of the plan. The plan requires the, quote, the impact on parking. On local neighborhood streets will be evaluated at one public meeting at least annually. I don't know if that's been done. I'm not aware of it, but I suggest the commission should ask for evidence that it has. I found no record of it in the board's online meeting minutes. Skip that and just a minor comment. Uh, the building official made a comment regarding ADA parking space requirements. I trust that that will be met. And lastly, I was going to comment, I had sent an email to the director. And I'd hoped he would respond, but I expect he will at some point about. Something to show you folks. How they have maintained the the plan well, and specifically, you know, the parking action plan was mentioned from the last two events. I I think you guys ought to get a copy of that because I think you'll find. It will show that, no, the the supposed parking that's going to accommodate all this is inadequate. Parking, I mean, parking action plan will show that, and I suggest you you get copies of those. Otherwise, thank you very much and. I'm open to any questions if you have them.
Hey, any commissioners with any questions? Go ahead, please.
I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
Okay, if I accept the data that you submitted at face value. Then I think it's missing some very key components. What was your count of the attendance at these events? If these events were attended three times or four times what we expect to be the maximum at the ballroom and the theater. Then the statistics mean nothing. These statistics only have meaning if the attendance at Toons on Tuesday and at the lavender festival. Can be assumed to be the same as what we will see in the theater and the ballroom.
The numbers are a representation of how effective the parking management plan has has been. You are relying on the parking management plan throughout this application. So I'm showing that the parking management plan historically has not been adequate. So you. If if this were a simple application where it just looked at the numbers that are required and how they are going to be applied. As normal park as normal quasi judicial matters are, then I would absolutely agree with you. But the requirement has gone beyond that because of the reliance on this parking management plan.
Okay, I don't think you answered my question, um, because the statistics that you presented presented to us. Uh, fall short without discussing the actual attendance at the events. The parking plan is something separate. But you're trying to tell us that this is what happened on Toons on Tuesday, and this is what happened at the lavender festival, and I appreciate that. But without knowing the attendance at either one of those events, then I don't think we can comment on the sufficiency of the parking for either event.
I I think the fact that it took over the neighborhood says that it was not sufficient. Whether it applies to the ballroom or the or the theater upstairs is a separate question, but the point, my point is. Your approval of these. The the your approval of the variance relies on the parking management plan being an effective tool. My point is, it hasn't been. And there's no reason to believe it's going to be any better. So you can. Dismiss it and say, well, we're we'll rely on it even though it hasn't been historically effective. We'll we'll expect it to be effective in this other case. I'm I'm telling you, it's not. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up. Is it Lori Parish? Okay, come on up.
You name, how are you guys? I have this big long thing to read to you, but. Right, oh. Uh, and you need my address? Three one one three Chris Rethive. Lonnie Parish, um. My name is Lonnie Parish, and I'm here to ask the Newburgh Planning Commission to vote in support of the parking variance for the Chehalis Cultural Center's Performing Arts Center. Though with that wing of the building. And I have multiple hats here. The first is I'm a business owner and a neighbor with homes in the district. And also I'm a founder of this amazing facility, which was so incredible to see those videos. Pictures and all the growth that's happened. For many years, I ran a successful upscale B and B right behind the cultural center. It's a craftsman home with lions in front. Initially, I was really concerned about the potential parking issues when Toons on Tuesday started to happen. And I was surprised to see that with signage and things that it worked really well, and my guests actually enjoyed having something to do that then wander over and. And participate. So that whole issue I had with fear of that was was taken care of. And I know they developed the parking plan, which Robert talked about, and I think. It may not have had as much diligence to it. As it did originally, but I think it does work. And I think it can work better, and I think that's just something that. We could take into consideration. I'd be curious how many people were in the water wise parking lot that day and the ones that aren't across Hancock. Because people aren't going to cross the street. It's too scary. To park there. And also found that most people choose to buy their homes close to the center because of all that activity that we have there. So buying a home there, you know. That things are going to happen. That's part of why the beauty of living there is they want to be close to that. You know, I've seen this area grow and flourish because of the positive fun energy created by our community coming together for Toons on Tuesday, Camellia Festival, Lavender Festival. Community Christmas tree, just to name a few of the activities that go on there. The inside's filled with sounds of laughter and joy as people, young and old, enjoy creative, enriching activities. And you learn tonight, um, I said, I bet you didn't know that no one has turned away from the center to the lack of funds. Um, we give sponsorships to so many people. The center is the heart of Newburgh and is physically located in the center of it and is a gathering place for all. The value of the Chehalis Cultural Center is a really important issue to consider in making your decision. Started as a dream by a partnership of the city of Newburgh and Dundee. Yamhill County, the Newburgh School District, CPRD, and a handful of volunteers over fifteen years ago. It has become an important asset for economic development and stability for our community. It's a proven fact that a robust art and cultural presence drives business and is often the first anchor brought into an area of revitalization. The building of the Performing Arts Center wing will only add to it becoming an even more important economic opportunity. People can stay close to home and see professional performances. Art and culture are a cornerstone for a well-rounded life and brings great livability to all communities. And lastly. The most important reason, in my opinion, to help the cultural center finish the theater and dance studios is because I believe art saves lives. I can attest to this personally because as a kid growing up, it was a healing force and a bridge builder and self-confidence thing and a place to discover so much. I'm so very proud of what this community cultural center has become. And how it's inspired and enriches so many lives. The Chehalis Cultural Center makes a difference. And you have the ability to help continue that legacy by supporting this parking variance. The millions of dollars that have been raised, plans that are ready, and a proven parking solution is in place that works. Let's bring the performing arts and music to the community stage for everyone to enjoy. So, and I would also just like to say that. I think the option of not having the theater and the ballroom run at the same time would be devastating for the center. Because if you look at even having a Rotary International come, there might be events going on, small events in each area, so. The ability to have both at the same time would be really good. And I do think, I mean, having those two great big events this week and. I was down there and it's I got to my places and pulled in my driveway, so that was good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and call up um Rick Lee.
Good evening. My name is Rick Lee. I've served on the uh Chehalis Cultural Center's Board of Directors for fifteen years. Including two years as president of our board and several years as chairman of our building committee. About ten years ago, uh, after an IGA, inter- intergovernmental agreement. Was requested to uh. For the city of Newburgh and CPRD. Um, dinner into the Newburgh Cultural District was an outcome of that IGA. And I served on that group along with Robert um for his first couple of years. Uh, for myself representing the cultural center. One of the reasons that that group was formed was to address the concerns around parking related to events in and around the cultural center. We worked on that issue for several months, maybe even a couple of years, and eventually adopted the parking management plan that's been discussed. How it's been operationalized has evolved somewhat over time, but in my view, it's been a very effective tool. Um, because it takes a proactive approach to mitigating parking issues in the surrounding neighborhood. In my experience. Almost all of the complaints that were generated, especially in those early years. Were due to events that were hosted by other groups, not the cultural center. Uh, but early on, the cultural center took the lead in informing event organizers. Of the parking management plan and asking them to take responsibility for mitigating the impacts to neighbors. Uh, and as you've heard from Sean and others, those complaints have dwindled to where they're almost nonexistent. Um, in August of two thousand seventeen, a few years after the parking management plan was first implemented. Our board decided to give it a stress test at probably the the biggest event that, one of the largest at least, that's ever been held there in the cultural center. It was a Toons on Tuesday concert, same band as this last Tuesday, Hit Machine, which is a perennial favorite. And event organizers told us there was about twenty-two hundred people. Twenty-two hundred people in attendance. That's probably three times more to Commissioner Griffith's point. Than we would ever, the largest possible crowd we'd ever programmed inside our building. Uh, I was among the volunteers that counted the cars using Robert's similar methodology to Robert's. Um, we counted all the cars that were parked on the streets or in lots within about a five or six uh block radius from the plaza. About an hour into the event, and then again, half hour after it was over. Uh, rounding slightly, there was eight hundred cars at the peak of the event. And after and two twenty-five after it was all over. So that tells me there was five hundred and seventy-five cars um that were event related. Um, during that peak time, similar numbers to Robert, two hundred and thirty-three cars were parked on neighborhood streets. The three hundred and forty-two are approximately sixty percent of the cars. Were parked in preferred spaces, the public lots and the private lots where businesses had granted permission to parking. Um, as was mentioned before, signs were offered that said no parking between these signs to residents. Um, eight pairs of signs were distributed that night. Uh, I met with three police officers who were assigned to the event. They patrolled looking for violators and they issued one warning to a car that was parked between the signs. They followed up a bit later and that car had moved. Um, they reported no other incidents um during that. In my view, the parking management plan at the most extreme event that I've. Participated in um worked pretty effectively. Departing from my written remark for just a second. I'm moved to a point that was made earlier. Where where would we build additional onsite parking? What would you want to displace in that block? That where additional parking could go. There's a green space that's on the corner of Sherman and School Street. Back in the back there, kind of near the uh water pad. Would you want to take out the green space and cover it with parking that would probably not be used very often? Should we remove the Rotary Centennial Park and put a parking lot there? I've never heard any discussion of uh. In recent days or. Of removing the gravel lot. I think it's our full intention to keep using the gravel lot, so I don't know exactly where that's coming from. So um, in other words, uh. I I don't see a more desirable alternative for putting onsite parking. Anywhere on the block. I realized that the example I gave about the Toons on Tuesday event uh was just one example, but it's an event much larger than anything. That the cultural center is ever likely to program. And I think that it is an illustration of the parking management plan works. So on behalf of the cultural center's board of directors. Please realize that we care very, very deeply about being good neighbors. Our new theater will have a very positive impact on bringing visitors to our community. And giving Newburgh residents another terrific entertainment venue for all of us to enjoy. We hope you'll vote to support this variance request. I thank you.
Uh, thank you. So let's move on to um Teresa Arnold.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Arnold and I live in.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Arnold and I live in just north of the cultural center in that block right there. I am the cultural district's neighborhood representative, so I took the opportunity to go and speak. With a large number of my, my neighbors who I knew wouldn't be here this evening. Many of us do not have our own driveways. We also have several people with mobility issues and that kind of thing. So I wanted to make sure they got heard. And we, as the neighbors, support the parking variance. We find that the parking management plan has worked. Granted, there could be more signage, but you think about it, there's a parking spot right there. Why would you go to a parking spot across town until those are full? We know we don't own the slot in front of our house. The courtesy that the cultural district has always given us. You can put these signs up, you know, your son comes home at five, he's got to get in change, get back, work for fire department. If there is, you want the signs, you have the signs. My disabled neighbor has them inside of her, in front of her house. So we feel that that plan has, has worked for mitigating the parking in the neighborhood. The, and we have felt always. Included in the decisions that are made. In fact, the neighbors were very thankful for the proactive asking of their opinions. And, and we're also grateful for the events, the big events, because they come by and they clean up afterwards. You know, so if someone's dropping stuff in your neighborhood. So that's even a bigger courtesy. We feel very heard and seen to. So. We are excited to see the cultural wing expanded and finished. Many of us grew up around here. We would love to see the history of this complete. We would love to see more events in our community for our visitors and for our neighbors that expand our culture. And various social events that we can attend. It would also include. Broader, even bring a broader community into our community as visitors. Because we can include the kids and we can include those who may or may not be into wine. And I think, so my neighbor's like, this, I've been waiting for this for a really long time. And they would like to see, to see it to completion. And I think that is all I had to say. It wraps everybody's up. Do you have any questions for me?
Just one question about how many neighbors did you say you talked to?
You know, over the last month, I think I've talked to about a dozen. And the understanding that a large number of the houses in my neighborhood are not lived in by the person who owns them. So it was a little hard to reach all of them, but all those that live there and have lived there and have. Reason to complain about their parking issues. I made sure I reached all of those. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And now. Bria Walter, if you would come on up. Oh, on Zoom, I'm sorry. Can you hear us?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Hi, I'm Bria Walter. I work for Saints Hill Church and we meet in the cultural center every Sunday. We rent. The bottom space there and our congregation meets and we have about two hundred and fifty to three hundred people a week there at the cultural center. And I just wanted to share in support of. The variance, just a little testimonial of something we went through not too long ago. It was probably. Four or five months back now, right before I went on maternity leave that we got a. Complaint from one of the neighbors passed on to us by Sean that there had been, in our mornings, there'd been parking around their house outside their space and. That it was brought to us kindly and clearly as a cultural center always brings us stuff. That staff is so, so great. But they brought it to us and we're like, we know that you don't have to do anything, but would you want to do anything? And of course we do. We want to be good neighbors too as renters of that space, as community space. So we brought. The parking, there was like a parking drop that they made for us of where people could park in different spots that you're not in the residential areas. How can we make it work? And we gave that to our congregation, our next gathering. And we've given, we made an announcement, told everyone, hey, this is where you need to park, showed them the map. Here's the spots where you can go. And we continued to make that announcement for a couple of weeks. And then we still, every Sunday, there's a slide that plays along with signage that we've put out in accordance with the plan that Sean gave us. So we really tried to remedy that and be good in that way. And Sean came to me and gave me the update that he'd spoke to the neighbors and there hadn't been any issue since we got that. So it was just a really cool testimony of not only like receiving that feedback, but getting to. Change what we were doing to make sure that the neighborhood was taken care of. And then also to hear that people did listen and respond. And respect that I thought was really, really sweet. Because we do have a good amount of people, but people who all as a collective. And I think this goes for anyone who will use the cultural center as a collective, want to respect that space, respect the neighbors. See, see the space well-used. And I think everybody's so excited to see this development happen. So yeah, I just wanted to share a quick story. Nothing, nothing crazy, but it felt, felt timely for this, this space.
Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing. Anyone have any questions? No? Okay, again, thank you. And at this point, I'd like the, for the applicant a chance to come up for rebuttal. My apologies. Yeah, I said it on what the others there. It's Mary Martin Miller, if you would come up, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mary Martin Miller. My address is two fifteen North Main Street in Newburgh and. I'm here to testify in behalf of the center's variance. Full disclosure, I've been. On the board and I've been the treasurer for the last ten years. But in nineteen ninety-nine, my husband and I bought the yellow house behind the center. And it's kind of a pivotal property in that we were there in the early days when a lot of this stuff was happening. Right from the beginning. My husband and I and a number of neighbors used to canvass the neighborhood to find out what people wanted. We heard from CPRD and other people involved in the community that there was an option to not. Just put a gym into the center. And we said, hey, let's talk. And we were all talking early on about. Lonnie's plan to have a cultural center in the district. So we spent years talking to people, going to neighborhood meetings and all that stuff. And then twenty-ten, when the center opened. We started to really see a lot of action at the center. For two years, we kind of watched there, watched what was happening. And there were some times that frankly, it was very colorful. We had a lot of kind of. Disagreements in the very early stages about what are we supposed to do? And we, as neighbors, were expressing a lot of caution about how things were going to be handled. Basically, people got along. It's just that we had to keep saying. We need a parking plan. We need an idea of what we're going to do here. Because when we did have a tunes on Tuesday, which started around twenty-ten. It was like crazy. It was really, really crazy in the very beginning, but I remember distinctly. You know, we let CPRD know about it. We let the center know about it. And I remember. Women's walking up and down the street counting cars and those were the early days. And it was, it was a little rough in the beginning. Back in twenty-twelve, when this. Latest thing was formed, I was one of the people that expressed a lot of caution and in fact said. Why are we doing this? Because we need to have a plan. But since the Newburgh Cultural District was formed, the neighborhood group was formed. And the center has shown through their actions that they can be trusted to manage the parking by scheduling events. We have not seen many problems. I know from talking to a lot of the neighbors, I don't live there now, but I've talked to a lot of the neighbors still and they all. Are very excited about what's going on in the district. Even when they have big events like the Lavender Festival. And tunes on Tuesday, I talk to people in the neighborhood and they say, oh, we love everything that's going on there. It's great to live in the neighborhood. And the feedback that I hear from a lot of people is that. The cultural center is being very respectful and they're always putting out signs and asking. You know, how can we, how can we do this better? So I do hear what. Other people have said that the Newburgh Cultural District, it's kind of been a little disbanded lately. We haven't been having active meetings. But we do have neighborhood representation like Teresa. And we need to be, we can do better with the. Parking action plan, but I believe that. The, the guts are there for everything to work together. And so I'm definitely. Saying that between the responsible people at the center. And collaboration with the neighbors, we can come up with. Solutions and do better with the parking action plan so that it works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you for testifying this evening. You just stated that the NCD has been disbanded. Can you elaborate on that?
Oh, no, I didn't. It's not disbanded. The NCD is still there. We just, I understand they haven't been having as many meetings that we had in the very beginning. They still, they still are active, but I'm trying to say that I think. The guts are in place to. Between the Newburgh Cultural District. And having a neighborhood representative actively participating. And talking about how we can improve the parking action plan between all those components, we, we definitely have solutions. I wanted to also say that I recently was volunteering at the Lavender Festival just this past weekend. And I was talking to one of the people at the center. Who happened to be telling me why they moved to Newburgh, why they were interested. And I was really intrigued because she said to me, the only reason we came here is we saw what you guys were doing with the cultural center. And we decided of all the places we wanted to live, we wanted to live in this town because of that. And that meant a lot to me because here is a person that's actively involved in the community. She's volunteering at this event. And telling me she's coming here because we have something very special.
I have a quick question, if I may, Commissioner Newton Curtis. So. I'm wondering, over the past year, do you, do you take note of the number of complaints you get for parking? Do you even get any complaints from neighbors for parking?
I understand we're just talking to people. I'm on the board, so I talk to people like Sean. And I hear that they're just occasional things and they address it right away. So they're very proactive. And that's what Teresa just said as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So at this point, the applicant would like to come up for rebuttal.
Thank you. I just want to make two quick points about the testimony that you heard. And opposition to the proposal. First off, the, Robert said that the variance that we've requested is reliant on the parking management plan. And then it's not the case. We are asking for a variance based on the day-to-day operations of the cultural center. So the square footage of the spaces that we are asking to activate trigger parking requirements. And those parking requirements are what we are asking to reduce. The parking management plan was referenced in the application because the twenty-twelve approval of the previous spaces. Required the creation of the parking management plan. And that was put in place to handle large events. We're not asking to rely on that parking management plan that, for the variance. The, the parking required for the day-to-day operations of the space will be handled by the one hundred. Less parking spaces that are available in the district in the area. The parking management plan is really created for large events. And it's sort of outside of the request that we are. We were talking about. A second point, I think we need to talk about the gravel lot again, because it sounds like there's a little bit of confusion about what is. Is not happening with the gravel lot. The plan is not to take the gravel lot away. And the reality is that it's. Being used as a multi-purpose space, that it can be used as an outdoor classroom. It can be used as a meeting space. And then if there's a need for people to park or. You know, sometimes caterers park there when they're loading in stuff into the ballroom. So it still can be used for vehicles, but the intent is not to create that as just a parking lot. Because once it becomes a parking lot, it's no longer a multi-use space. You can't use it for these other purposes. So the goal is to keep it as this space that's flexible and can be used for lots of different things. But as soon as this becomes paved and curved and striped, it's no longer useful for anything other than putting cars on. So we just wanted to clear that up, that it's not being taken out of available parking in the event and the large events. It'll still be able to be used for parking when it's necessary, but the plan is not to have it be a permanent parking space.
Yeah, I'll just also add to that, that Mr. Sapi, Mr. Sapi is my friend. And there's nothing that's going to happen here tonight that's going to change that. So I just want to say that. I also want to point out that Aubrey Nichols is, is back there. And Aubrey was one of the organizers of tunes on Tuesday, which is not a cultural center program. But does happen in our spaces. And I can attest that she and many of people on her crew were out there walking around doing parking monitoring. As was I. I also, on Friday night, we had a kickoff event for the Lavender Festival with about two hundred and forty people there. I canvassed the neighborhood. I took photos of the streets. I did the same thing on Saturday afternoon during kind of the peak of the festival, as well as Sunday afternoon at another peak of the festival. And what I can say is that at no point were there not available parking spaces on streets in front of people's homes. There were always spaces in front of people's homes. And those neighbors who did use the signs that say no parking here, those signs were respected. And those people didn't have any trouble keeping their parking spaces. And the neighbors that I met and discussed parking with at that time. Did not express any concerns to me about that.
Thank you. Just one quick point. Could you? Could you just reiterate what you're looking for for the amendment change as far as the non-concurrent events?
Yeah, I can go grab the, the language, but in essence, what we're asking is to be able to treat the ballroom. And the theater as one room that has a capacity of three hundred people, rather than saying on or off for either room.
So basically just asking to strike that from the.
Yeah.
Yeah, the language says very specifically, you can only use one space or the other space. And what we would like to have the ability to use those spaces, but to balance the loads so that. Like the examples we gave where you could have a rehearsal dinner in the ball, or you know, like a small rehearsal of a wedding in the ballroom at the same time. Of theater is being used for a performance. So we were just concerned about the like. Neither, you know, the finale of that.
Understood.
Okay, great.
I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have, but I know that you got a couple of other things on your agenda tonight. I feel like. And we've done a good job of explaining our perspective. And unless you have other questions, I'll, I'll cede the time.
I just have one more. So I think I heard that you offer no parking signs to the residents around. I think that's fabulous. How do you advertise that?
So when we do the street closures, we send out an email. We have a list of folks who send the email out to. And at the bottom of that, it says, contact the library if you would like a no parking sign. I think it also says that on the bottom of the. Cultural district's website. The city maintains the cultural district's website, so I can't really speak to. To everything there, but the, the library holds those signs. And if a neighbor comes by, they're happy to hang by. Oh, I'm sorry. There was one question you had had, Ms. Newton Curtis, about parking complaints that just missed Martin Miller. And obviously, we don't get a lot of them. They're, they're, they're pretty rare. And I think Ms. Walter, Bria, the Saints Hill Church. You know, that was one of the more recent complaints we've had, which I think that was back in February. And that's kind of how we deal with it. I think Mr. Sapi, after our Camellia Festival in April, pointed out to us that our gravel lot, the overflow lot there had gotten blocked. And so, you know, we, we were like, oh, shoot, we have signage for that. We should put that out. And so it's been out there ever since when we have big events. So in a very real way, we do rely on our neighbors to give us feedback and are actually very thankful for it when we get it, because then, then we can do better.
I need Commissioner Wright. When is your annual meeting?
September.
And this is for residents to bring forward any complaints?
Residents or anybody, yes.
Do you have meetings of those minutes?
Do I have minutes of meetings? I believe so. I'll have to look. Do I have minutes of meetings? I believe so. I'll have to look. And I'll have to talk to Corey Burkle at the at the library. Corey is the, I think Corey is the secretary of that group.
Thank you very much.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to go ahead and close the public testimony.
I, Commissioner Capri, I had one small question. And that is, if there was a large event going on, is it not possible to have a shuttle service active for parking?
Yes, absolutely, it would be. And in fact, that is one of the contingencies that exists in the parking plan. If you utilize all of the available partner lots, as we call them in the area, the Waterwise Lot, the Kelly Group, those business lots, and if you utilize all of those and are still not coming up with enough spots to meet your need, then one of the conditions that suggested is to run a shuttle service, perhaps to George Fox, perhaps up to Jake with Park, perhaps to somewhere else. So yes, that is definitely an option.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
One more question, Chris Wright. Who provides your shuttle service?
I have been here six years and I have never used the shuttle service. We've never had an event that necessitated the triggering of that shuttle service during my time here.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'd like to go ahead and
Commissioner Muso, may we have the gentleman from CPRD, please?
Oh, come on, come on up.
My name is Casey Creighton. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Shalem Park and Rec District. I'm here to answer any questions regarding the shuttle. Shalem Park and Rec owns a bus that we can use for a shuttle at any given time. It's not used in the district so much as for senior events. Occasionally, kids take it on field trips, but it's available most days.
That's very good to know that it is one is actually owned and it's another service. You don't have to go out and purchase. Excellent. Is the Shalem Park and Recreation District able to enter into any agreements or enter into any written correspondence for properties that may be included in those 120 I want to know if you have or will enter into contracts in place or by agreement by recorded common sanctuary instrument with businesses or private lots providing the 276 parking spaces to include first rights to purchase property for CCC overflow parking.
We are Parks and Rec, not Parking Lots, but we do own another property up there, but it's not big enough for a parking lot and knowing all the businesses around there and I would hesitate to say yes at this point, but I mean, yes, it's possible.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. No further questions.
Thank you very much. And at this point, the public testimony potion is closed and like to move on to final comments from staff and recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I think we have some protocols to deal with first. So Mr. Sapi requested that the record be left open for seven days for additional written comments. So you have to do that. So that seven days would start tomorrow.
Well, that would come after final comments. All right, where we would go into
You've already, you've already received staff's recommendation.
Okay.
So there was a request to leave the record open for seven days. That would start tomorrow. Then after the close of that seven days, the applicant would have seven days to provide any written response. Any comments we get in the first seven days. So effectively, you're to the point before you even get into deliberations is to continue the hearing to your August 7th meeting, I believe it is, is it claimed? It's August 10th, excuse me, August 10th at 7:00 PM at the Public Safety Building.
And that would require a motion and a vote, correct?
Yes. And I would like to point out that that would also exceed the 120-day shot clock, which expires on July 20. So we would, we would need the applicant to agree to an extension. Yes.
I'm seeing how this has gone on tonight and such, I'll retract my request. And I was no longer asked to have the record left open. I assume that will simplify matters and allow you to wrap it up tonight.
That would.
Then I will do so.
Okay, thank you.
Did I state it correctly?
Yes, you did, Rob.
So in that case, as we do have the staff recommendation, let's go on to planning commission deliberations.
Okay.
I actually think that the the community center is a wonderful addition to the community. From what I hear, it sounds like they do a very good job of organizing the parking and working with the local community to make sure that any complaints are resolved in a way that benefits the the community. I think it might be good if they could increase signage, if that's a possibility, or or make it clear to people coming to the center that it's really preferable to park at some of these off-site locations, which actually are not that far from the community center. But I honestly, I'm very much in favor of of the variance.
What do you feel about the permanent signage that has been previously talked about to be installed and put on the city's website and the maps for specific parking locations prior to building of this to make sure it is put down somewhere as previous, as a previous condition? What do we all think about that?
Can we put a condition on the city for approval of this? Because that's what, am I understanding you correctly, that we're asking the city to do something to its website as a condition to approve the applicants?
How does that work, Doug?
The city installs traffic control devices within the public right of way in compliance with the manual for uniform traffic control devices, MUTCD. What you have here is you have a cultural district who manages the district itself, which is the cultural center, the library, the Waterwise Garden, and you know, out to the interior streets. So my first question is signage where? So is if it's in the cultural district, should that be a responsibility of the district to do? And of course, then they'd have to coordinate with the city. Or are you talking about signage outside of the cultural district? Where you could recommend that the city potentially do signage? But then that would take coordination with the Public Works Department, the city manager, would also need to inform the council about, should we be spending money? Were something that was not in our budget for this year for some specific signage? So it's a complicated question and a complicated answer.
Is it the responsibility of the city or CRPD or CCC?
Again, if you're with the city installs
Parking signage, Mr. Sapi, was it for parking signage? I'm sorry. Let's clarify that.
You need to reopen the public testimony?
I do believe it was for signage for parking. And the city, I do believe, already has district
We
signage?
So in the downtown area, we have two public parking lots. There is signage. It's not the best for those two public lots. We do not sign for private parking lots.
That answers that. So it would probably be at the financial responsibility of CCD to come up with that signage and put them see, thank you for that question, CPRD, or that signage. Should that be put in as a condition?
I would be against adding it.
Encourage it.
Encouragement, yes. I don't think it condition.
What about making sure that they have future? What about making sure that they have future parking with entering into agreements for first property rights of any sales that go on?
I don't think we could ask them to do that because the parking lots that are utilized come with a building. So I I don't think it would be realistic to get the district to enter into an agreement with a bank or a real estate firm that says they have right of first refusal should there be a sale. Because I don't think it would be realistic that the district could afford, or if they bought it so that they could use the parking lot, then what are they going to do with the building? And then what would the tenants of the building do if the district has rights to use the parking lot? I I think they're connected, but that's just my understanding.
And there is the option of a shuttle.
An intentional complication.
There is the the option of the shuttle if if that's needed. So it sounds like that would take care of that problem.
All right. And as a commission, should we request a copy of the parking management plan?
We already have a copy of the parking management plan. I think it was the action plan was the piece that was under discussion.
And where's the, and the parking management plan is on the website, so. All right. Yeah, that's about the only thing that I was concerned about. Yes, I have to have talked to and have family members that own property around the cultural center. And they are also in support of this, the variance. So that's not an issue, and I do not make it a issue in my decision either. I have no further deliberation.
Okay, yeah, if if I could just add as well, I think it's pretty clear, it's very clear, we have a very responsible part of the community and it's already from what I can see, ironed out any issues that have come up and is open to ironing out them out in the future. And one term that's come up before in the commission is livability. And I think that this cultural center is kind of a definition of adding to livability. And as a community and and the residents around there seem fine as a as a community, as a shared thing. I think most of us would say that we'd rather, if we had to walk a block or two for parking versus building a new structure, that that's not the end of the world. And so I I definitely like to support this. And I'd also like to address the language that has the requiring that they don't have concurrent events, if we could do that.
And do you have any verbiage thought out?
I think that, I'm sorry, there's language suggested by the executive director and his June 2nd email. If we get to the point where we make a motion, I was just going to suggest that we take that language and make, put that into Exhibit B to facilitate that flexibility.
Doesn't it just state alternative language that denotes neither be used simultaneously?
What I might suggest, Commissioners, is that if you had a desire to take the language that the cultural center has proposed, it would be inserting that language and removing the language that staff had recommended to you. And that's the simplest way to do it. Okay, I'd like to make a motion if we're ready for that.
Absolutely.
We move to adopt planning commission order 2023-11, which approves the requested variance with the attached conditions of approval in Exhibit B with the condition that the Exhibit B, the existing language be struck and be replaced with the language suggested by the executive director of the Shalem Cultural Center in his email of Friday, June 2.
I second that.
Can I make a comment before we do this? Is, do we have to put in here a condition of use must keep parking gravel parking lot because of the language? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up is another quasi judicial public hearing. And this one is for CUP 23-0005, a conditional use permit approval to use a single family dwelling as a vacation rental home at 204 West Third Street. And I'd like to call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none. Doug, if you want to go ahead with the language.
ORS 197797 requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable state, city, and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. Planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker. And the party's an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it now, you cannot bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on the application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you. So let's go to staff report.
Commissioners, for the record, I'm Clay Down.
Commissioners, for the record, I'm Clay Downing. I'm the planning manager and I'll be reading the staff report into the record. So this is a vacation rental for a property at two, zero, four, West Third Street. The applicant is Gabriel Luthan and the owner is Caribbean Luthan LLC. It's a request for a CUP approval for a. Use of an existing three bedroom, single family dwelling for a vacation rental. Property is located in the R one zoning district or low density residential. It's a tax lot number is R three, two, one, nine, AC, one, three, zero, zero, zero. The applicable criteria are associated with the conditional use permit criteria fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero. And the vacation rental home special use criteria can be found at fifteen point four, four, five point three, zero, zero through fifteen point four, four, five. Point three, five, zero, vacation rental homes. This is an aerial of the subject property, which is located near the intersection of South Grant Street and West Third Street. Like I mentioned before, it's in the R one zoning district. On the left here, we have a zoning map. So there's primarily surrounded by R one. It's abutted on all sides by R one zoning district, but in the north eastern portion of the. Map, we see that there's some R three and and central business district or C three zoning district nearby. And on the right hand side, we have a public utilities map showing service delivery for water sewer and I don't believe there's any stormwater shown on this slide. Uh, first of the applicable criteria related to location, size, design and operating characteristics. So. This subject property is locate is an existing single family home and has three bedrooms. It's got. Two off-street parking spaces located in the driveway. And the use is compatible with other residential uses in that it's similar in size and scope to regularly rented or owned dwellings. Criteria fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero B regard related to location, design and site planning of the proposed development. So the downtown center or the the central business district or the downtown area is located approximately three hundred feet away from the subject property. That's part of what we saw in the zoning district map just to the starting north and east of the subject property. Also, the proposed use is similar in size and scope to long-term rentals longer than thirty days or owner occupied dwellings. Criteria C, the proposed dwelling will be consistent with the code. Or the proposed development is required to be consistent with the code. The use is compatible with other residential uses. And the proposed use will be consistent with the applicable criteria if it meets those found. In fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero, as well as those in NMC chapter fifteen point four, four, five. Related to vacation rental homes. And so going on to those criteria related to vacation rental homes as special uses. Two oh four, West Third Street, again, is an existing single family home in an R one zoning district. So vacation rental must be a single family dwelling and this one is. Required to be registered um, with a city transient lodging tax. And the owner has acknowledged that and will do so. The standards uh, associated with this two off-street parking spaces located in the driveway will be provided. The proposed project would have a maximum occupancy of six guests or two per bedroom. Weekly waste collection would be provided by waste manage management and the applicant has acknowledged the premises will not be include RVs, tents or other temporary shelters. As part of the vacation rental operation. And then posting of information, contact information for owner and rental management company, police, vacation rentals, maximum occupancy, weekly garbage pickup. Will all be posted by the front door and the applicant acknowledged those in the application materials as well. So with that, stack recommends that the commission move to adopt planning commission order two, zero, two, three, dash, one, four. With conditions approving the conditional use permit for CUP two, three, dash, zero, 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 five. For a vacation rental home at two oh four, West Third Street, EM Hill County Tax Lot. R three, two, one, nine, AC, one, three, zero, zero, zero. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Clay. This time I'd like to go ahead and open the public testimony portion of the hearing. And I'd like to invite the applicant to speak. Is the applicant present?
Um, I would say check Zoom. He had indicated that he might be attending via that. Is there Gabriel perhaps?
Gabriel, if you um, ready, go ahead and state your name um, for the record and give us your presentation.
Yeah, hi, my name is Gabriel Lauten. I first off, this is my first meeting I think I've ever attended or virtually attended now. Um, and that was quite the example of the last two hours. Lots going on. So this was awesome for my first time. Secondly, I just wanted to say I'm. Have grown up in the area, went to Dayton High School and went to George Fox. And so I've lived in Newburgh for almost fifteen years and. You meet my wife, love hosting. Guests, and this is an example of a partnership between myself and another George Fox. Or previously George Fox, George Fox alumni going in together and.
Gabriel, this is Linda Newton Curtis and I'm wondering if you can get closer to the microphone or. Or something, it's it's almost impossible to hear you.
Yeah, is this any better?
Yeah, that's I think that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that I I passionate about the community and and. Newburgh in general and actually the last two hours of listening to the. Uh, cultural center presentation was really eye opening and awesome for me as I know. Um, I, as someone who has lived in Newburgh, has loved to be involved in that. So anyways, I just wanted to say. Um, here in present and I'm excited for the potential of using this as a short term vacation rental and. Uh, helping serve the community in that manner.
But thank you. Um, any questions um, for Gabriel from commissioners?
I think Commissioner Wright, um, will you be allowing pets?
No, our plan and we I have managed or co-managed other properties in other districts and. At the moment, um, most homes, we do not allow pets in. This one specifically has a lot of carpet. Um, which is very challenging for um, our cleaners or or. To manage. Um, it takes them a lot longer to turn over a home.
Right, thank you, Gabriel. No further question.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Um, and we have no submissions for public comment with regard to this one. And um. It was for a later property, was it not? So you you wish to make a comment with regard to all of them? Okay, cuz it's numbered differently. Okay, so so come on up. State on once you do state your um, name for the.
My name's Julie Kadiga. And I have some. Questions, concerns. Um, I I was here specifically. For one of the other vacation rentals that is uh, near a property that we own, but a lot of what I wanted to say. Actually, when I saw several on the docket, um, applies to all of them. Um, I was born and raised in Newburgh, went to George Fox College, um, worked here for a long time. Um, have had several rentals here. I've sat on the Newburgh Revitalization Committee, Traffic Safety in the eighties. Was not an official member of the Affordable Housing Committee in the early two thousands, but was there. Um, a lot of times more than some of the committee members, but anyway. Newburgh has for a long time talked about non-affordable housing, non-affordable rentals. And I'm, I think people should be able to do what they want with their property, but this has been such. A huge concern that we are in essence looking at pulling for more. Entry level style homes for sale or for rent out of the market. I don't have the solution, but I want to be on record that between the planning commission and the city council. You need to come up with some things, but one of the questions I have is. Um, of the afford of the vacation rentals um, submitted to this planning commission, how many have been approved roughly? How many have been denied? I just did a quick look at uh, VRBO and Airbnb. I actually put in Carlton and it pulled up. Newburgh, Dundee, several counties. There's over three hundred. Three hundred potential properties that. Are housing that we've taken out of the market. So I don't know what the answer is, but. If you continue to approve all of these, you're just making your problem worse. And being a landlord, um, I've. How I see it, my tenants have been in my house over ten years. But having a vacation rental allows owners to skirt the landlord tenant issues. Um, they can rent their property probably for a couple weeks and have a monthly income. So I encourage you to. Maybe put a pause on all of these until the city and the council can come up with. Something um, to not make the problem worse because every time you approve one of these, our problem gets worse. And I just want to make sure that gets on record with the planning commission um, on that. Um, the other questions I have are, you know, how is how does the city respond to complaints? Uh, when you have neighbors that may not be living up to um, what they potentially submitted and agreed to. Um, and some of that I'll talk when I speak on the app, uh, one that's pertinent to where our property is. Um, do vacation rentals transfer upon change of ownership of the property? Or does it have to stop and the new owner reapply for that? Um, what, what are the checks and balances that the city has for the vacation rentals? Um. Uh, let's see here. Talked about all of that. Um. So those are, those are the general. Comments I have for all of the submissions. And when I came here tonight, I did not know there were other. Properties on the agenda, so I thought it was important to speak. For that piece beforehand for you to really think about. In approving these, what you're doing, right, or what you decide. You know. It it really. Um, it really speaks to is the city doing what they need to do for their part? In trying to create affordable housing and affordable rentals. Thank you. Any questions before I?
Yeah, thank you and.
May I respond to that?
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks. This has been a concern of mine for months. And I have. Been pretty vehement, I think, in my concern. However, unfortunately. One of the things we have to go by, which actually I didn't realize at first, was the codes. And the codes are like these written laws. And if. The criteria is met. Then unfortunately, as a planning commission, we don't have much. Leeway to deny it. Not much at all, as it turns out. However. I think because of our concerns and because we've been pretty vehement about it, Clay's actually doing some research. About how we might. Um. Ameliorate this problem cuz I agree with you. I think it's a huge problem. I didn't grow up here, as you can probably tell. But I've lived here for thirty years and I've seen huge changes myself. So. As I said, I I I'm one hundred percent behind you. I think one of the things that the residents of Newburgh. Don't understand is that in order to contest it in a way that is. Gonna work for for them in order to contest a vacation rental home, they should look at those codes. And see where the applicant. Potentially is not meeting the code and contest on that basis. But I'm with you one hundred percent.
Yeah, I, like I said, I believe in property rights. I think you should be able to do what you want with your property. But because this is such a forefront issue, I encourage the planning commission and the city council. To really take a hard look at how many of these you have. Because when you say we need affordable housing, we need affordable rentals and then you're allowing them to come out of the pool. You're not dealing with the problem. And so I I encourage you to. Look at all those things because. There's a lot of people that struggle. I honestly cannot believe how expensive. Apartments are in this community. I was shocked, absolutely shocked. Um, so anyway, uh, that was overall what I wanted to to say in pertaining to all of your applications. Tonight, and then I'll speak more when you get to the one that affects us directly as a neighbor.
Yeah, I just want, oh, thank you. I was just gonna say, yeah, that's what I wanted to point out as well that, you know, that that is on our mind and that that is being looked at. As something. With regard to, do we limit numbers? Do we limit where they can be? Things like that, but at this point, it's it's still in the works, but it is on the radar. And then I was gonna ask Doug. If you could address um, transferability, is the permit to the person or to the property?
It's to the property, so it's transferable.
I I would encourage you to also look at that, especially because if. For some reason, there was a problem with a property that gives the neighbors the ability to come in and. Have the city address it before another approvals granted.
We we I just, we hear you. And I just want to echo what Commissioner Newton Curtis said. It's, we're sympathetic. At this present time, if an application comes in and it meets the criteria, we if we don't approve it, it just will get appealed to the city council.
And I totally understand. I understand that process and I. I know coming in that to some degree your hands were tied. But I do want to make sure it goes on record, so you hopefully will put it at the forefront with. The council to address, so you can hopefully. Curtail the bleeding of the properties coming out. I mean, seriously, if I. I have wonderful tenants and like I said, they've been in our home ten years and. Um. But if I was a lot younger, I would probably want to do this because I don't have to deal with the landlord tenant rules. Um, which are becoming strangleholds on owners. So I mean, yeah, I don't have the answer. I sympathize. I just want you to be aware.
And just the sit for the staff, they have, this is a topic at every meeting since I've been and they are working. We're looking at what other cities do. I think we even talked about whether legally we could do a moratorium until there are rules. We we hear you and I'm glad that you understand, you know, that's why they read that legality at the beginning if. You have to say, well, what is it that they're not meeting according to this code, but we hear, we hear you.
Yeah, and I and I can say the rest of mine when you actually come to the property that I'm here for. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Wright, Doug, who for the record is our codes officer?
The city's code compliance officer, if that's what you're asking, is Neil Winter. And are you, so are you asking about complaints and actions that go along with that, Commissioner?
Okay. Okay, so um, there was a comment, I'd like to offer the applicant a chance for a rebuttal.
Yeah, I would love to speak to that. Um, first off, I am also a long-term landlord in the Newburgh area. Um, so I understand what the comments and where they were coming from in regards to. The landlord laws, they are very challenging to work with in Oregon in general. On the contrary to that, I also um, would like to ask. How many of those three hundred units have permits? Um, I know that some jurisdictions are better than others in regards to making sure that their short-term rentals are permitted. Um, and it's my understanding that in Newburgh, that's a mixed bag of tricks. So that's kind of the first place to start here. So that's kind of the first place to start here is that, um, yes, maybe there are a lot coming to the table with, you know, trying to get permits. Um, but at least that is the correct form of action versus kind of skirting that, not potentially not paying the tax and not having a permitted building, um, or a permitted short-term rental. The other thing, I mean, regards to the comment that was stated, um, about is it tied to the building or to the person? I agree with that stance in regards to, um, making it tied to the person, or I've been in other jurisdictions where it's tied to both. In other words, if someone is, you know, shows that they're not a host or a good host that can handle both the property maintenance and the neighbors as well as guests coming in and out, um, they should not be allowed to just move homes to another one, um, or the home itself, then should be deemed not worthy, at least until they can comply again.
Uh, thank you. Um, any questions on the rebuttal?
Not the rebuttal, but um of staff, um, even if approved for a short-term rental, uh, can it be used as a permanent rental? I think you said something about that recently.
So you, you, you can use a dwelling unit as a long-term thirty days or more. You can apply to the city, go through the process, uh, as we're doing tonight to get a vacation rental approval, conditional use, runs with the land. Do not have any language that you can tie it to a person, the way our code language is written today. I can see some eyes when that came up, um. A person could, um, get a short-term rental approval. And then, you know, a year and a half, two years, decide we wanna go back and do long-term rentals. And the, the way, again, the way our code is written, a year later, they could go back and they could use it as a short-term rental again, because they have that approval, and it runs with the land. So those are all things that Clay has on his list, that he's looking at about what you can consider and provide some recommendations to the council, and then we'll have a conversation with the council and we'll get some policy direction about what they want to do. Moratorium has come up several times, that's on our list. Um, McMinnville did a moratorium for a period of time where they were revising their short-term rental regulations.
This is probably not the time to say it, but I do feel like we're hitting a critical mass and we should expedite things, but I guess that's for a later discussion.
Yeah, just on that one, how many do we have approved? Fifty, we, the approved we have, I, I don't remember the exact number, it's somewhere more, I think we're above thirty-five, less than fifty. But the number that we have in total, because we grandfathered in a number through the, and this'll, this, again, this is in that other topic related to the research, it's approximately sixteen eight, sixty-nine, I think there might have, maybe it was even in the low seventies was the number, and that's from a cross-analysis of the conditional use permits, the transit lodging tax and the business licenses that we've recorded. So could there be people flying under the radar that we don't know about? There absolutely could be, but that's probably the best available information we have. Are they under the radar? I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, hold on, um, I should probably close the public testimony. If we're going, yeah, so at this point, let me close the public testimony. And any final comments from staff, and then we'll go to deliberations.
So staff's recommendation stands that the commission moved to adopt planning commission order two zero two three dash one four with conditions approving conditional use permit CUP two three dash zero 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 five for a vacation rental home at two zero four West Third Street, EM Hill County Tax Lot, R three two one nine A C one three zero zero zero.
Yeah, thank you, Clay, and now let's, um, go to, um, commission deliberations.
Commissioner Wright, I see no, uh, problems from agency comments or public comments. The application looks good, and I have no questions, no further question.
If there are no further questions, then can we get a motion with regard?
Planning Commissioner Wright moves to approve planning commission order twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, approving conditional use permit CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 five for a vacation rental home at two oh four West Third Street, ML County, City of Newburgh, including exhibits A and B.
Commissioner Griffith, second.
Can we have a motion in a second? A roll call vote, please.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jeff Muesel?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
The motion passes. So, moving on, uh, we have another quasi judicial public hearing. CUP two three dash zero zero six, conditional use permit approval to use a single-family dwelling as a vacation rental home at two ten North School Street. At this time, I'd like to ask for any abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction.
Um, I live within five hundred feet of the house, but I won't let it interfere with my, um, ability to consider the the, uh, oh gosh, I'm getting really tired of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Doug, if you wanna go ahead with the language?
ORS one ninety-seven seven ninety-seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision-maker, and the party is an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at FUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you. Let's, uh, move on to staff report.
Commissioners, I'm, I'm pretty sure you know who I am at this point, but I'm gonna go ahead and introduce it for each item, and my name's Clay Downing for the record, and I am the planning manager for the city. I'm gonna go ahead and get started with this as an application for a conditional use permit to operate a vacation rental at two ten North School Street. The applicant and owner is Mary Kira Clark, who requests for a CUP approval at an existing four-bedroom, single-family dwelling to operate as a vacation rental at tax lot R three one nine A A zero two eight zero zero. The property is located in the R two or medium-density residential, uh, zoning district. And applicable criteria for this case is fifteen two two five point zero six zero related to conditional use permits and fifteen point four four five point three zero zero through fifteen point four four five point three five zero related to vacation rental homes in the special use chapter. This is a site, or this is an aerial view of the subject property. It's located on North School Street. You can see it's located between East Hancock Street and Sheridan Street. On the left, we have the zoning map. You can see that this is located in the R two zoning district, and it abuts the C three zoning districts to the south and central business district. On the right is a public utilities map showing some of the services that are available. The applicant also provided a site plan of the property, indicating some additional features like bedroom locations and those sorts of features. Related to the conditional use permit criteria, criteria A related to location, size, design, and operating characteristics. This one is located in an existing single-family home with four bedrooms. There are two off-street parking spaces located in the driveway. The application materials describe the intent of the owner to remain living on-site during operation of vacation rental, which I refer to in the staff report as a home share. So that's one that you do finally get our research, that's a term that comes up fairly regularly in other jurisdictions, so if I flip over to that word, that's what I mean. The, and this use is compatible with other residential uses as it is similar in size and scope to regular rented or owned dwellings. Criteria B from this section related to location, design, and site planning of the proposed development. The downtown central, downtown central business district abuts the property to the south, and the city's cultural district is located across North School Street from the northwest area of the property, or catty corner from the property. Proposed use is similar in size and in scope to a long-term rental, or longer than thirty days, or an owner-occupied dwelling. The proposed development being consistent with the code or criteria C, this use is compatible with other residential uses as it is similar in size and scope to regular rented or owned dwellings, and the proposed use will be consistent with the applicable criteria so long as it remains compatible with both the conditional use permit criteria as well as those found in the special use chapter. Uh, New, Newburgh Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point four four five, uh, Article seven relating to vacation rental homes. So in relating to vacation rental homes in the special use chapter, two ten North School Street is an existing single-family home, and it's located in the R two zoning district, and vacation rentals are required to occur in single-family dwellings. The owner acknowledged in the application materials that they will register with the city and pay the required transit lodging tax. There are two off-street parking spaces located in the driveway that will be provided. The proposed project will also have a maximum occupancy of eight guests or two per bedroom. Weekly waste collection will be provided by waste management, and the premises will not, uh, include RVs, tents, or other temporary shelters in, in the operation of the vacation rental home. The application materials also acknowledge the posting requirement and indicate they will uh, include contact information for the owner who intends to directly manage the property, police, vacation rental standards, maximum occupancy, weekly garbage pickup days, which are Mondays, and will be posted next to the front door. And that, and then staff's recommendation is that the commission move to adopt planning commission order two zero two three dash one five with conditions approving conditional use permit CUP two three dash zero 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 six for a vacation rental at home at two ten North School Street, EM Hill County Tax Lot, R three two one nine A A zero two eight zero zero. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to the public testimony portion, and at this time, I'd like to invite the, um, applicant, if you're in the room, to come up and give us your presentation. Once you get here, just state your name for the record.
Okay. Hi, my name is Mary Clark, or Mary Kira Clark. I live at two ten North School Street. This is incredibly stressful, so, oh, thank you for bearing with me. I've never been, it feels like court. So, um, but bear with me, I, um, I am newer to Newburgh. To be transparent, I've lived here for a few years, and I, I love the cultural center, and the parking has never bothered me. Um, the music is amazing, so, um, I do have an Airbnb at the coast. I've had a coastal Airbnb for three, four, five, probably almost six to seven years. So if you want any key characteristics on moving to something different, um, at the coast, they've, uh, got a, a lot of implementations that are very, very different than here, um, uh, and they do work. Um, this one also is advantageous, though, cuz you are paying a lot of money for a permit, so you're reading out people that aren't willing to commit to um, a lot of the criteria that we have. Um, for me, my neighbors directly to the sides of me are aware of my Airbnb and across from me. Uh, I do plan for Airbnb, but I also plan, I've got a, a few vineyard friends. So, um, it'll enable me to allow to have, um, some of their interns and some of the harvest uh, workers to come and spend the evening at my home and also come in quite late. Um, at times, uh, sometimes they are driving quite far, uh, to get home. And I don't know if you know what harvest is like, I'm sure that you all do. It's really, really painful, and it's long days. And so, um, my bedrooms will allow the opportunity for them to spend the evening um, on days that they want to spend, so I'm locking out time for them, uh, to be able to stay, stay the night. And so that'll be probably a continuous thing with a few of the wineries. Um, I said I have to get approved first, so, um, for them to spend the night there. Uh, I, you know, I, I have to admit, I have, the Airbnb that I have had, um, yeah, I've learned a lot. Um, I've learned in talking with Clay, uh, you, you do think that, um, when someone is staying in your home that they are, uh, as smart as you are, and they're going to treat your home as you would treat it, or if not better. And that is not always the case, so, um, for the most part, I've had wonderful luck, but, um, it, it is not always the case. So I think that there's incredibly strict guidelines that you have to put forth as an Airbnb owner, um, and you really have to spell it out to the letter as to quiet time, um, you know, what you can and cannot do. Um, I think that part of it with the Shaheilum Cultural Center said is being a good neighbor. Um, so although I can have eight people in the home, that's not my plan. Um, I live in that home, I have pets, um, I have animals, and so I think for them, the less is more aspect of it. Um, the entrances that I have do come through my front yard, so the separate entrances, so, you know, I think that there's gonna be criteria when they can come, um, and then also, you know, when they can enter my home, because of my animals as well. So, yeah, it's more of a home share, um, it's a possibility. The long-term renting is something that I'm interested in as well, as we get to pos- college time, that may be something that I want to move to instead to help, um, with college kids. Uh, so I, I appreciate that that opportunity is available. Is that, is that okay?
That is just fine. Um, commissioners, have any questions?
That is absolutely perfect. Um, I appreciate.
Yeah.
Um, do you have any complaints against you at your Airbnb in the coast? Better business, Pura?
No, no, actually, I don't, um. My neighbors are amazing at the coast. I actually, I'm the only Airbnb on an island. Um, I'm on the Halim Bay, um, most of my, when I first got in there, I was the solo Airbnb. And it was not, it wasn't, you know, it was not loved, just the idea of it. And so I think part of it was, we had to send a letter. I actually posted a sign. I still have a sign outside of my home, and that really helps too, because it gives the, um, neighborhood a direct phone line to call. Like you're saying, when I talk to Clay, I'm like, oh yeah, post a sign outside the door. I was like, none of the Airbnb houses have signs outside of their homes. I'm required at my Airbnb at the beach to have my name and my phone number or the management so that my neighbor has a way to call, cuz if you've got a sign on the inside of the door, uh, your neighbors don't know you. They're not gonna know who to call other than maybe like, um, non-emergency possibly. And so I think it really opens up a, um, a nice dialogue, you know, cuz the last thing that I wanna do is to make my neighbors mad. Um, so I, I think that that's something, um, the burn ban is a prob, it's, okay, the fire pit, I have a fire pit in the backyard, and there is no burn ban right now. But my neighbor doesn't like the burning, so I just stopped the burning in the backyard, the fire pit during this time. So that, that would be like something he asked me to do recently, but no complaints, no.
No, it's excellent that you work with your neighbors.
Oh, no, I love my neighbors, and they actually have the renters over sometimes for drinks. You know, there's a lot of good that comes out of it, so they, you know, they, they really enjoy them. Yeah. Any other questions?
Okay, if no other questions, um, then, um, I thank you.
Okay.
And we don't have anyone put forth for testimony on this one, so we probably won't be asking you up for a rebuttal.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and close public testimony at this point. And
I appreciate your time, and I do hope you consider me for an Airbnb.
Thank you. So we'll just move back over. Are there any final comments from staff?
Staff recommendation has not changed.
Thank you. So let's go to planning commission deliberation.
I just want to say that we did receive a letter um, from somebody
um from somebody that lives within the local community. And one of the things this person explicitly said or referred to was livability. Which is part of the criteria that we need to look at. I also remember that when there was a another uh vacation home also in the general community, that this same person wrote a letter at that time. This is not to say that I don't think you would be a fabulous landlady or be a Airbnb host, hostess. But I do think that we need to really think about these letters that we receive. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, that was a a letter from Elizabeth Gann. Um. Page nine of uh seventeen of this document. And I too, uh, we've discussed livability as a future criteria to address. Um. We can't do it at this meeting. Obviously, um, but pertaining to this application. The agency comments, there are no uh adversities there or any other public comments with the exception of livability, which we have a very broad description of currently in our codes, which we hopefully will address in the future as well. Thank you. No further deliberation or comments from Commissioner Wright.
Sorry, Chris. I interrupted you. I just think that if we have the word livability, livability in the code and somebody states that it's impacting their livability, then we need to think about that. And with absolutely no offense to city personnel. I don't think that city personnel can say that it is not affecting a person's livability who clearly states that it is. That's my opinion.
Anyone else? Okay, then I'd like to ask for a motion.
Funding Commissioner Wright moves to approve conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero 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 six for a vacation rental home at two ten North School Street, Yamah County, City of Newburgh. Including exhibits A and B and attachments one, two, and three.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Grover has second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
This is nothing against you and it won't make any difference, but I have to vote no on this.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. So go ahead and close the hearing.
Mr. Oh, go ahead.
And um looking at the clock, um, we are past ten P M and our rules um for um prohibit us from starting any hearing after ten P M without the consent of the commissioners present. So I'd like to ask everyone, what do you think? And then I got the last two or others too good. We shall proceed. You're all good and you're approved.
And you're so nice and I bet you'll make a wonderful hostess.
Okay, so next step is um C U P twenty-three dash zero zero eight conditional use permit approval to use a single-family dwelling as a vacation rental home at three, five, one, two East Coffee Lane. And I'd like to go ahead and call that meeting to order and call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact and objections to jurisdiction. I'd like to add, I do um live on Coffee Lane, but it's more than five hundred feet away from the property in question and I will not let it impact my decision in any way. And we'll go ahead and move on to staff report.
Legal announcement first.
Legal announcement, my apologies.
That's okay. O R S one ninety-seven, seven ninety-seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at Luba. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to that issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Doug. And um now let's go to staff report.
For the record, my name is Clay Downing. I'm the planning manager for the city and this is the, an application for a vacation rental to be operated at three, five, one, two East Coffee Lane. The applicant and owner Kelly Voight and Brian Voight, C U P, uh, they're requesting the C U P approval for using an existing four-bedroom, single-family dwelling as a vacation rental at three, five, one, two East Coffee Lane or Tax Lot R three, two, one, six, B D zero, zero, one, one, six. The property is located in the R one or low-density residential zoning district and the applicable criteria for this case are those related to conditional use permit criteria as well as vacation rental homes at fifteen point four, four, five point three, zero, zero through fifteen point four, four, five point three, five, zero. This is a picture of the aerial uh or an aerial of the subject property. It's located nearest intersection here is at East Coffee Lane and Gemini Street. On the left, we have a zoning designation. You can see that this is surrounded on all sides by the R one zoning district. And public utilities are provided primarily through uh utilities provided along East Coffee Lane in front of the house with stormwater facilities located on the cross streets. Uh, applicable criteria related to conditional use permits. Uh, criteria A relating to location, size, design and operating characteristics. This was an existing single-family home that has four bedrooms. The applicant is requesting use of one bedroom for a vacation rental with a maximum occupancy of two people. The subject property has two off-street parking spaces and an existing garage as well as an additional three off-street parking spaces in the driveway. Application materials describe the intent of the owner to remain living on-site during the operation of vacation rental. Again, in staff report, that's described as a home share. This use is compatible with other residential uses as it is similar in size and scope to regular rented or owned dwellings. Criteria B related to location, design and site planning of the proposed development. This, uh, this property is located less than half a mile from shopping centers along North Springbrook Road and Highway ninety-nine West. It's located approximately two miles east of downtown Newburgh. And the proposed use would be similar in size and scope to a long-term rental, longer than thirty days, or owner occupied dwelling. Criteria C related to proposed development and being consistent with this code. This use is compatible with other residential uses as it is similar in size and scope to regular rented or owned dwellings. Proposed use is consistent with the applicable criteria. Um, and will remain so as long as those criteria are met relating to vacation rental homes. So with respect to vacation rental, uh, one of those criterias that needs to be a single-family home, this is an existing single-family home located in the R one zoning district. The application materials acknowledge that the owner will register with the city and pay the required transient lodging tax. Standards relating to vacation rental homes, this one has two off-street parking spaces located in the driveway that will be provided for renters. The proposed project would have a maximum occupancy of two guests and two per bedroom. Weekly waste collection will be provided by waste management and the premises is uh and the application materials acknowledge that RVs tents and other temporary shelters will not be allowed in the on-premises uh under Operation Vacation Rental Home. The application applicant has provided posting information related to contact information for the owner who intends to directly manage the rental property as well as police, vacation rental standards, maximum occupancy, weekly garbage pickup day, which will be Mondays, all being posted near the front door. So with that, staff recommends the commission move to adopt planning commission order two zero two three dash one six with conditions approving conditional use permit C U P two, three dash zero, 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 eight for vacation rental home at three, five, one, two East Coffee Lane, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three, two, one, six, B D zero, zero, one, one, six. And that is my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, this time we're gonna go ahead and open up the public testimony portion of the hearing and invite the applicant up to the table. Are you the applicant? Okay, just uh come up and uh state your name for the record.
All right. My name is Brian Voight. Um, so my wife and my son are at home tonight as I'm representing the family. Um, hopefully he's asleep. Um, we're a young family. We've been in Newburgh for two and a half years. Uh, my wife is a P E teacher and a coach uh who has and continues to coach high school sports at Newburgh High. Uh, and I'm an engineer at a local technology company. Uh, our home is nicely set up uh with an addition that is comprised of one bedroom and one bathroom and a little living space that has a separate entrance into our home. Uh, and this addition is what we're proposing tonight to be approved for use as a short-term vacation rental. Um, we have no plans to rent this dwelling out in any way other than just this one-bedroom addition, which is a space we're barely using at present. Uh, we really only use it when we have family from out of town who comes to visit. Uh, so we really live in the remainder of the home. Uh, we use this home as our primary residence uh and we would directly manage the rental uh for additional income as we build our family. And we're excited for the opportunity to do this and contribute in our own way to the commerce and prosperity of Newburgh. Yeah, take any questions. Thank you.
No, thank you. Any commissioners with questions? This one seems pretty straightforward and just, and just a rental. Um, I thank you and I'll ask, um, Julie, did you want to speak with regard to this property or the other one? The other one? Okay, okay. Um, so at that, in that case, then um I'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And if there are no additional comments from staff, um.
Recommendation is unchanged.
Okay, we'll go ahead to um deliberations.
Uh, I'd like to speak to this uh Commissioner Capri. It just is a comment. Uh, we were speaking earlier about the approval goes with the property and to me, it's an attractive proposition with this particular property in that they've got a spare living arrangement that can be rented out and they can maintain their privacy. Should they sell, then does that conditional use still remain with the house, but could then all of a sudden be, well, it's a four-bedroom house, so there can be eight people there and all of a sudden you're in in our one-zone neighborhood with a lot of neighbors who all of a sudden this would become an issue of livability. So, so I guess that's my question. Does it transfer as there's only one bedroom that's going with this conditional use or is it the whole house?
Commissioner Capri, the conditional use permit would transfer or run with the land as approved, and in this case, it's approved for one bedroom. And a maximum occupancy of two people because it's for one.
Okay, good, thank you.
And that was, and just to be clear, that was done because the applicant specified that was the request in their application materials. If they had, if they had requested otherwise, it would have been evaluated otherwise.
Anyone else? Okay, then uh go ahead and entertain a motion.
Funding Commissioner Wright, in order to approve the lawsuit. Oh, never mind. Here it is. Um, Planning Commissioner Wright moves to approve Planning Commissioner Order twenty, twenty-three dash sixteen, approving conditional use permit C U P zero, 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 eight for a vacation rental home at three, five, whoops. It's the wrong one. What's the address?
Three, five, one, two, East Coffee Lane.
Three, five, one, two, East Coffee Lane, uh, Yamhill County, City of Newburgh.
Second.
And.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
The motion passes and the hearing is closed. And next step is uh C U P twenty-three dash zero, 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 three, conditional use permit approval to use a single-family dwelling as a vacation rental home located at three, seven, zero, four, East Coffee Lane. I'd like to go ahead and open the hearing and ask for any abstentions, bias, ex parte contact and objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none. I'll just go ahead and and state for this one as well. I do live on Coffee Lane, more than five hundred feet away from this. And I will not let it affect my judgment in any way. Um, want to go ahead and with the legal announcement?
O R S one ninety-seven, seven ninety-seven requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. Law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at Luba. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you. And with that, let's go ahead to staff report.
So Doug Rock's Community Development Director, so we'll enter the entire staff report into the record. So again, this is a vacation rental at thirty-seven oh four East Coffee Lane. Uh, this is a redo of a case that we did back in May. We had a noticing issue. Uh, and so we reached out to the applicant and they had to renotice. And so we're redoing the hearing. So applicant owners Kevin Long and Sarah Smith, uh, this is a C U P. This is a CUP approval for an existing three bedroom, single family dwelling. In thirty seven oh four east coffee lane, R three two one six AC zero one four zero zero. The zoning of this property is R one. The applicable criteria are fifteen two two five oh six oh, which is a conditional use permit and fifteen four four five three hundred through three fifty, which are the vacation rental home standards. So this is the aerial that shows the location of the site. Again, it's zoned R one. This is a picture of the site. With the home. Fifteen two two five oh six oh A. So the location, size, design and operating characteristics. So. Against located in an existing single family home in the Spring Meadow subdivision, stage two, has two off street parking spaces located in the driveway. The use is compatible with residential uses as similar in size scope. And to regular rented or owned dwellings. Fifteen two two five oh six O B. The location, design and site planning. It's located approximately two miles from downtown commercial core. The proposed use is similar in size and scope to long term rental longer than thirty days or owner occupied dwelling. Fifteen two two five oh six O C proposed develop will be consistent with this code. So the use is compatible with other residential uses similar in size and scope. And then the second one is proposed use is consistent with the applicable criteria for conditional use fifteen two two five oh six O. And fifteen four four five are vacation rental home standards. The vacation rental home standards, again, we've identified the address several times thirty seven oh four east coffee lane, single family dwelling. It's in the R one district. The application material notes that they will register with the city and pay the transient lodging tax has two off street parking spaces are provided. Maximum occupancy of six guests. So it's two per bedroom. They've noted in their material that they will not allow per our regulations, RVs tents or other temporary shelters. And their material identifies that they will do the required posting. For rental management, police standards and so forth. The garbage pickup at this location is on Thursdays. So staffs are recommending the commission move to adopt planning commission orders twenty twenty three dash thirteen with conditions approving the condition use permit CUP twenty three zero 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 three for a vacation rental home. It's thirty seven oh four east coffee lane Yamhill County tax lot, R three two one six AC one zero four zero zero and repeal order twenty twenty three dash oh seven.
Thank you, Doug. Let's move on to public testimony is the applicant on Zoom.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead and state your name for the record and then go ahead and get.
Okay, yeah, my name is Sarah Smith and I live at three seven zero four east coffee lane here in Newburgh. My husband and I are applying for a short term rental permit. We have a camper van and we like to go camping. On the weekends and sometimes during the week. So we would like to be able to. Rent out our home. When we do that, we do live here full time. We. Love living here full time. We've had the opportunity to talk to all of our direct neighbors about what we're doing and they've all been. Very supportive. We have done an Airbnb before in a house that we also lived in a long time ago, like ten years ago. We did that for about six months when we are also kind of traveling a lot. And we also have four long term rentals. So we're landlords. We have three homes in Portland and one in Minneapolis. And we're excited for the opportunity to. To be able to rent out our place. So I'd love to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions?
Commissioner Wright, I notice there's a water feature in your backyard of your neighbors behind you. Do you have fencing around your property to keep any small children from wandering into that area?
Yeah, we do. The whole yard is fully fenced.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yes, Commissioner Capri here. I just have a question. About if it's three bedrooms, six people could have three vehicles. Is there parking for all three vehicles off street?
Yeah, yes, there's plenty of parking off street too.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And we'll go ahead and move on. You will get a chance for a rebuttal. But at this time, I'd like to invite. Julie Kadiga.
I appreciate you all taking the time for this long meeting tonight and wanting to have to come back. I actually am the reason this is being reheard. I found out after you had approved. I actually, I should say I'm Julie Kadiga, managing member of NALC LLC, who is the actual property owner. Of the of the property. We own it with my sister and brother in law. I, my big concerns are is this went through the planning commission, the applicant signed an affidavit that the property owners had been noticed. We were not noticed. When one of the members found out that this had gone through, the question was asked to them, what do you think about their? B and B rental going in across the street from you? And she's of course, what are you talking about? So I, she contacted me and said, Julie, follow up on it. So I contacted Clay, who is very helpful. And he said that situation has never happened before. I have actually done projects that have a noticing requirement and you're signing that you have no noticed people. So Clay had said that this was going to have to be rehearsed because I wanted to come talk about. My concerns with all the Airbnbs and my concern that we were not noticed. For this. I had told Clay when he sent me some information that I would let him know if I did not get the second noticing. Which he said that it is was sent to our address, but we never did get the second noticing. So I don't know if the city of Newburgh mails those or. The applicant. I know prior it was always the applicant mailing them. I know we were not the only neighbors that were not noticed according to Clay. The original time around. So I do have concerns. They are doing some very nice landscaping. But the process in talking with Clay, there really are not any checks and balances that the city does. Except for if they have time to go around and see if the sign is posted out in front. There's no auditing of any of these applications to to see. Even a random sampling. And, and yes, I understand that takes time and money. But a lot of people would be hesitant to come forward because it's already a done deal in their mind. I happen to know the process. So. I, I wanted to bring that piece up to the planning commission that there really needs to be more checks and balances or. Maybe the applicants need to have the self addressed envelopes with the sheet they get, bring them down to the city, the city checks them off. And they actually put them in the mail because honestly, I get notices from this, from applicants. And I don't know how they pick up our address from properties that we've sold two, three, five years ago for planning commission notices, but. I didn't get one for the property that we currently own either time. So that makes me nervous on what is happening with what's going to go on with that home. We have wonderful tenants. They keep the property beautiful. They've been there ten years, actually probably a little bit longer than ten years, but anyway. We never have to worry about it. So this came as a surprise to us. And I just want some reassurance from the planning commission in the city of Newburgh that if there are problems. That they. Will be addressed. I, I probably wouldn't feel this strongly about it if I would have got noticed. But it really does bother me that when an applicant signs that they've sent the notices to all of the. Property owners within 500 feet. You should be double checking the list. So anyway, that's really. All I wanted to talk about. I know you don't have a choice on approving it at this point and. I, I'm not against Airbnbs, but I, I think there needs to be a better process. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Any, any questions?
No, Commissioner Wright, no questions, but I really want to thank you for bringing your concerns forward to the commission and some other specifics. That Clay will be introducing to us along with these. Modifications of code that we can take a look at in the future to. Apply such issues and things, checks and balances.
Yeah, I just. You know, in doing the process, you know, we submit a sheet to the city that says these are the people we've notified. But we actually dropped them in the mail. So there is. There really is nothing there. And I would encourage the city to say you submit all the prepaid or pre postage envelopes. With the information in it so we can check it off against the list to make sure everybody's noticed. Because I think there's probably a lot of people out there that, you know, if they would have heard it was approved, they would have said, oh, it's a done deal. I can't do anything anyway. But I, I just think there needs to be a better process.
Doug, does currently it up to the applicant to mail a notices?
The applicant is required to prepare the mailing list and mail the notices. Since they have to get a title report. Typically, what we see is we get a mailing list that's prepared by a title company. Would say in all cases, but typically that's what happens. And so the information is pulled directly off of what's in the county assessment rolls. Which has a site address and a mailing address. We mail to the mailing. Yes. Well, they get mailed to the mailing address.
I, I would like to ask how so many people didn't get noticed.
In the first round of this is that the. We found out after it was brought to our attention because we were sitting here in the hearing that night and a lot of people saying we didn't get noticed is. York Hall Clay did some work and so forth and their notice was off by. A whole bunch to the west, right? So it wasn't 500 feet from the property. It somehow got skewed. So everybody to the east that many people should have been notified, did not get notified. So that's why we reached back out to Sarah and Kevin and said. Obligation on you to do the noticing, you have to give us an affidavit. This one's wrong. We need to redo the case. You need to send out a new notice. Provide individuals the opportunity. So with Clay talking with Julie. Email got forwarded to me and I ordered an email back to her. Here's the notice.
Yeah. And, and like I said, we never got the second notice. So the only reason I knew is because I had talked with Clay and said I would reach back out in a couple of weeks if I hadn't received anything because he said. A new notice should be going out soon.
So in this one, they put together a, a new list, like they actually sent me the Excel spreadsheet. Of all the stuff and they hired an individual to assist them, Melissa, through that process. They also, we have in the file. A photograph of all of the envelopes all laid out. That they were going to mail in addition to an updated affidavit for their mailing and their posting.
You done with me? So you can finish and go home.
Yeah, I just want to thank you as well.
Okay, so this time I'd like to offer Smith the opportunity for a rebuttal.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I, I totally agree and it's definitely it was not our intention to try to fool anyone or do anything. Not by the book. When we found out the first list was incorrect. We, you know, we're, of course, we'll do this again because we want to do it correctly. And so, you know, luckily Melissa, the woman we hired to help us did take really thorough. You know, pictures and a spreadsheet of everything that was sent out to make sure that we did do it correct this time, but. You know. Yeah, we definitely want to do everything correctly. So hopefully we've, we've done that this time around.
Any questions at all? Okay, well, thank you. So at this point, I'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And. Turn it back to staff for any final comment, recommendation?
No modifications to the recommendation that we've already presented.
Thank you. So let's go to planning commission deliberation. Anyone?
No, this is pretty straightforward. There have been. Planning Commissioner Wright, sorry. The application seems to be straightforward. There are concerns of neighbor pointed out. There was no a. Purposeful intention. And again, thank you for being able to bring that forward at our last meeting so we could. Correctly do that according to the time tables by law. Other than that, the application seems to be pretty straightforward. No other complaints or issues. Directly with codes or other things. And I have no further questions or deliberation.
So if there's nothing else, can we get a motion?
Funding Commissioner Wright. Moves to approve conditional use permits CUP zero zero three for a vacation rental home at three seven zero four. East Coffee Lane Yamhill County, including exhibits A and B.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote please.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeff Musaw.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
Motion passes. The hearing is closed. Thank you. And moving on. We are ready for. Items from staff.
I'm going to make it brief because it's like. You have your forward calendar. Please be aware you've got our hearings coming up at your August meeting. So, and they're all quasi judicial actions. At this point in time, we don't have anything scheduled for September and October. So that could all change, it all change.
Certain that'll change.
I might say, given this the late hour, we don't have a whole lot to update on the, on the research and so forth. And so as we're scaling up with staff. We have hired two more individuals. One starts on Monday. And the other one will start on August twenty eighth. So we'll be able to introduce you to them when we get them on board. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would say staff is done.
Could I ask one question? Is there a timeline for when we're hoping to get some results?
It's, it's still as soon as possible. I, I wish I could give you a better timeline, but sometimes part of it is that the case management. Changes and bringing on staff is actually taking away time. For now. So we're still in that training period and because we've got. New, new hire one, six weeks, then new hire two, then six weeks, then new hire three. That's the process for a little bit. I am, I. Am still doing everything I can. I understand where all of you are, especially on an evening like this where this is such a big. Percentage of what you're talking about. And, and I do appreciate all of the patience that you all have given. And the recommendations and thoughts and really the thoughtfulness associated with some of the discussions we have had. So I'm going to try and incorporate that. And be timely, to the extent possible.
How do we put a moratorium in place?
My understanding is that needs to come from city council and it would need to have an end date associated with it.
Do we have to make a recommendation to the city council?
That would be the appropriate paths since you've been talking about this. Okay, sorry about that. That would be the appropriate path is that it's your next. if you want us to prepare something that at least was on your calendar for August to take forward to the city council to consider implementing a moratorium on vacation rentals. Then you would need to have a motion and a second and a vote on that. And then we would work to put something together for you to consider at your August meeting.
I make a motion that you put something together for the August meeting that implements a moratorium on short term rentals.
A second now.
We have a motion in a second. Vote please.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
And that motion passes. And so the only item left on the agenda is items from commissioners, if anyone has anything. That being a no. I adjourned the by thirteenth meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission and I look forward to seeing you all in August.